I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:31 for the Willet's City Council July 24th meeting, if you'll all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
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 All right, roll coffees. Councilmember Connie Strong.
Here.
Terrence Gonzalez.
Here.
Mayor Rodriguez. Present. All right, thank you all for coming this evening. We have quite a bit on the agenda and quite a few speakers for public communications. So if you are here for an item that's further down on the agenda, please be patient with us as we have a lot to cover this evening. I'm going to open it up for public communication. The city council welcomes input from the audience. If there is a matter of business on the agenda that you're interested in, you may address the council when this matter is considered. If you wish to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Dolores will be our timekeeper, as usual. The Brown Act regulations do not allow action to be taken on audience comments in which the subject is not listed on the agenda. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. While the city council welcomes public criticism of policies, procedures, programs, or services of the agency, behavior that disrupts, disturbs, impedes, or renders infeasible the orderly conduct of the meeting, and that includes but is not limited to any kind of profanity slurs, yelling from the audience, threatening remarks, and so on, we would have to remove you. But I'm not expecting any of that tonight. So at this time, if you want to speak to something that's not on the agenda, please go ahead and come on over to the podium. If you wouldn't mind announcing your name, and then you have three minutes. And if, I see Melissa's up here, if you want to go next, maybe just one person always in the waiting, and then if you see that there's an open spot, and the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. My name is Melissa Coughlin, and I come here tonight in front of you to comment on a police stop that occurred on June 28th, in which my son and his two friends were held at gunpoint by Willet's PD for a traffic stop that should have never happened. Your officer, Cody Pearson, did not properly investigate this stop, and escalated into a dangerous and potentially fatal situation for these three young men that are out here in our waiting area. He could have killed them. One mistake could have ended their lives. I recognize that you cannot comment. I recognize that this officer doesn't work for our department anymore. I understand that the complaint has been filed, and it is proceeding through the process. I'm here today because I want you to see them, know who they are, know their faces, attach a human to those names in that complaint. The poor reputation of this department has permeated our county. The continued inability to properly police is well-known amongst our citizens and other law enforcement communities. What is it going to take to clean apart department? Training, maybe? Increasing pay so that we attract better quality officers, maybe? Or is it going to take something bigger? Is it going to be another lawsuit? Is it going to be three dead kids? So while you are working on hiring new officers, hear my voice. As a mother, as a teacher, a community member, we want officers in our community who are here to protect and serve, not harass and intimidate. And if we cannot find them, then maybe we need to dissolve our department. I call on my community to hold Willet's PD accountable. I call on my community to do better, to hire better people. My hope is that every single one of you, our city leaders, can lead this department, increase our, sorry, set our standards higher. It's all of our responsibility to make this community better, a place where we feel safe, a place where our youth can thrive, a place where we're all working together to create a healthier community. Maybe it's time for a citizens oversight committee that can work to improve community relations. And if that is the case, I will be the first person to volunteer for that. The incident sends a clear message that our kids are not safe, that they may in fact die. Again, we cannot continue this status quo. The lives of our people are in harm's way. The culture of harassing and intimidating particularly young people is unacceptable. We demand better, and we must do better.
All right. Could anyone else? I think Laura was next.
Oh, mine's in relation to the same woman that just spoke. I also had an interaction with this officer where I saw some children on the side of the road and was concerned. When I approached, I was threatened with arrest, and I have seven children of my own who were in the vehicle. The officer was lunging at me, telling me that if I did not leave, I would be put under arrest. So I do think that it is the community, you know? It really matters that the community is there to care for each other. And it really matters that we remember that with great power comes great responsibility, just as though the position of power that all of you are in, our police should be held to the same standard. So that's all. Kirsten Johnson.
Thank you. Good luck. And I am going to ask you not to applaud or boo or any fashion in between each speaker, if you would, please.
Good evening, city council. My name's Ellen Drell, and I'm here to bring up a topic that I guess the city has been thinking about for maybe three years, four years. But it was precipitated by the information we got from some neighbors of the new Starbucks development that they were going to take down those young, two young redwood trees in order to make room for their drive-through coffee dispense window. And I was shocked that, you know, it was 106 degrees outside and that there would even be the possibility that trees could be cut down to make room for idling vehicles. So it brought up a lot of issues. And at the forefront was Willet's needs to protect its trees more effectively than it's been doing. We've had lots of incidents over the last few years of perfectly good, healthy, mature trees coming down. I can think of two instances where there was no danger. They were just in the way of what a developer wanted to do. And then, of course, we had the cork oaks, and we had the liquid amber trees by the farmer's market, and other incidences, of course, the trees in the park. I understand since all of this happened a couple of weeks ago that the city does have an urban forest management plan, but it's a little bit like a general plan, kind of an idea of what might happen someday sometime and what an intention is, but it's not filled with specifics. And also, it did not take into account the fact that citizens want to be involved in this kind of an ordinance. So I would suggest that before the city makes any more, spends any more money on consultants, et cetera, or makes any more decisions regarding trees in the city, that they appoint a citizens' advisory oversight committee that will work with the city in creating a very, a strong and effective and enforceable tree protection ordinance, not just an ordinance for managing the, you know, picking the right trees and knowing how to take care of them, that's all part of it, but also an existing tree protection ordinance. So I urge the city to reach out to the citizens. There are a lot of us here tonight and throughout the city who would like very much to be part of creating such an ordinance. And it need not even require an expensive consultant. Scores of cities in California have tree protection ordinances, and we can use those as templates to get going. I want you to know that you've got citizens that are capable and ready to do the work and want very much to protect the trees in this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ellie Smith, and I'm a past vice president of the Little Lake Grange here in town. I come here not only as a Grange member, supporting this as the whole Grange. I'd say at least 90% of our Grange would double what she said. I'm also coming as a local coffee shop business owner, asking that Starbucks be very closely monitored in their actions that they take.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers for items not on the agenda?
No.
Good evening. My name's Laura Toomey Rowland, and I also want to speak for the trees. Nice to see everybody tonight. I'm in agreement with Ellen, and I was very happy to find out that the city of Willet's does have an urban forest or a tree ordinance in the works. However, I really want that, I would love to see the citizen participation in the development at the inception of that urban forest or tree protection ordinance. I do think that we need a citizen oversight group for this ordinance and future ordinances. When I met with the city planners upstairs, I found out that there's sidewalk ordinances and franchise ordinances and all sorts of things that we can add to make the development of our town more intentional. And we do live, we are the gateway to the redwoods, so I'm all for protecting our trees. And then with the Starbucks development and the trees, I would love to, I understand that there's a verbal agreement that Starbucks won't cut the trees down, but I think we need a written agreement if that one is not already existing. So most of all, citizens involved at inception, not just, you know, presented with a plan already developed, in these ordinances, and also arborists. I'd love to see real trained arborists involved in the health of our trees. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Hill, and I'm a resident here in Brook Trails for over 35 years, and I just want to say that I support Ellen and the ladies in every word of which they're saying, and I'd be happy to help them to be on a committee or anything they need in response to saving our trees, all our trees. I know that they've already cut down two very large trees at Starbucks, and I don't understand why, but evidently, we heard the city gave the approval for that. I don't know, that could be hearsay, I really don't know, but I just would like to see our trees saved as they're just very important to each and every one of us, as we all need oxygen, and it just helps to make our town more beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. The, just so you know, the microphone is only picking up your sound for those that might watch later on YouTube or on local TV, but if you want to tip the microphone because it is pointing up a little bit towards you, you're welcome to, but it won't project your voice in the room.
I assume too. I'm also talking about that, and I have a little history on Starbucks, I'll start with, and then a little more about the redwoods that other people are probably not covering. Michael Allen. In the early 80s, Seattle, there were only two Starbucks. One was downtown and one on Capitol Hill where I was living. They were friendly, local, community-oriented, like most hometown coffee houses are. I knew the couple who, at one of their parties, the husband planted the seed that Seattle needed a roasting company. He became Starbucks' first master roaster. I could about shares for $6 at that time. Little did I know the future would bring a Starbucks to every airport, city, town on the planet, just a big fat corporations, and no longer community-oriented in the least, The mid-90s through the early 2000s, I lived and worked in Big Sur and watched what we called flatlanders who would buy a property, move in and limb up, as Starbucks has been saying they'll do to these trees. Limbed up the redwoods for unobstructed views, making them top-heavy. I witnessed many, way too many, of those mutilated trees topple over in high winds and coastal storms. Other than Big Sur, I've lived in the redwoods in Humboldt County and on the Mendo Coast. The redwoods need those bottom limbs. They work with what is relatively a shallow root system, considering the size of the trees, it's a, so the limbs are part of a stabilizing anchor for them. Starbucks Corporation wants to take out or limb up these two redwoods for an unobstructed view of their signage or more parking, and could give a flying you-know-what, how our community might feel about it. Corporations are not people, and as of 2020, Starbucks CEO pay package was equivalent to $9,637 an hour. So it's like we're David and they're Goliath. If they want to take trees, they'll take them. For Willet's, or even Mendocino County in general, having a tree ordinance is an issue probably should have happened a long time ago. I think a half-define could be laid on those who cut them down or limb them up, causing them to fall, in which case owners should be responsible for damages. Also, maybe the city could make a tax credit available for those who keep the trees. Not monetary, they're not monetarily precious, well, I guess to some people they are, but they give us beauty, they shade, they help us breathe clean air while filtering and cooling hot breezes, other than being the most regal trees on this continent. And that's pretty much it, but maybe we could address Starbucks, take them back to their beginning when they were community-oriented, a little memory lane.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
I will make it very short. My name is Yannick Ponte, and I'm totally against that destruction of those trees. I am an environmentalist, and this is not okay at all. And we do need agreement from all of you to say, no, absolutely not. That's it.
Would anyone else like to speak to an item that's not on the agenda? Is someone in the hallway?
I'm Amy Grooms, and I've owned a home on West Oak Street for the last 18 years. I'm here to talk about my concerns with the abandonment application process, specifically the alley behind, between Highway 20 and West Oak Street. There has been an application submitted to remove the alley, and therefore remove access to the back of my property. Myself and 13 others that adjoin the alley strongly oppose this application. I have attached the signatures of those property owners. I wanted to inform the council of an upcoming and agenda item for next month regarding the alley. My neighbor, Mr. Casa Grande, has started the right-of-way application process to remove the public alley between the homes of Highway 20 and West Oak Street. I've included that application for reference. The steps in the application process are very clear. I have not received my adjoining property owner form, which is number six on the application package submitted checklist. It is my understanding that only four adjoining property owners have received the form. I have included copies of the two adjoining property owners' forms that I have. Since I have not yet received my form, therefore, the application process is not complete. Since December of 2020, Mr. Casa Grande has sent multiple letters to the adjoining property owners, which I have included in the packet, stating the city has already agreed to abandoning the alley. The claims about safety concerns with the alley have been mitigated with the installation of the gate many years ago. I've talked to the neighbors and gathered signatures twice since 2020, which I have also included in your packet, that oppose the abandonment. I believe this particular issue might be why this abandonment process was even put into place or created. I appreciate the time in creating this policy, but I would hope that the policy would be followed. I believe the policy was put forth to ensure the resulting decision wouldn't be detrimental to the property owners or the city. After speaking to Dusty Dooley on Monday, the 22nd, I was informed this abandonment application will be put on the agenda for August 14th. He said it would be informational only. After reading the application process, I have since realized that this will actually be a public hearing. At the top of the application, it states incomplete applications are void. And, sorry, now I'm messed up. Okay, okay, it will not be accepted. It appears that Mr. Casa Grande's incomplete application was accepted and is now at the public hearing stage in the process. How does one bypass the completion of the application and go straight to the public hearing? The process designed to protect the property owners and the city has been set aside for some unknown reason. We have been told by the several city employees that if one adjoining property owner opposes the abandonment, it won't be put into motion. At what point do we stop looking over our shoulder and worrying about the midnight decisions that we are not included in? Mr. Casa Grande's deceptive tactics should be taken into consideration if this goes to hearing. I hope you, as a city council, will review the agenda items and ask the appropriate questions so this process can be handled correctly. Thank you so much for taking my, your time to listen to me.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Okay. All right, we're going to move on to public matters. We couldn't address you on the items that were spoke about before us, however, on the agenda under, at the end, under number 11, council communications or under city manager reports, you may hear some follow-up information on the, on topics that may have been spoke about this evening. So moving on to public matters, we have an update from our third district county supervisor, John Hascheck. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor. Council, city manager and council. So there's been a lot going on with the county. First of all, with the fired districts, there's been, you know, we, we passed Measure D, and that was for the TOT, the transient occupancy tax going to the fired districts, and Measure P, which was for the private campgrounds. And then there's also the Prop 70, or 172 money. And so there's been a formula that's been worked out, so the fired districts will be getting their money quarterly now, and the money should be flowing, okay?
Good.
So there, you know, with the Measure B money, which was the mental health sales tax, that we put out an RFP, a request for proposal for construction of the psychiatric hospital facility, and that closed, we accepted a bid, and the bid fortunately was about $6 million less than we had budgeted. So it will be about a $13.3 million project, and that's on the south end of Ukiah, okay? And they're going to break ground in early August, and then they expect it to take about 400 days to, to build. So, so that will be, you know, kind of the goal of Measure B was, all along, was to create a puff again, so. The tax sharing agreement, that I voted against it because, not that it, Willet's, you know, is kind of a ideal situation where you can do the, have the services for annexing certain parts of, like southwest Willet's or whatever. But the problem was in Ukiah, annexing that part of north Ukiah along North State Street, which had 14 of the 25 largest tax generators in the county, is very complicated in their projecting that if it's transferred into Ukiah, then it will be a net loss of $3 million for the county, and those are services that will have to be cut to, to make that happen eventually. So that's, I just wanted to share, that's why I voted that way on that issue. The Justice Center, the, the county got a grant to, to purchase the Justice Center. It's pretty much a done deal, it's just a few little odds and ends need to be made up. But, you know, we're going to take over the, the part and have mental health services in, in the Justice Center part, okay?
Quick question.
Yeah.
Does that mean then that the county will do some upgrades to the facility now that they have the grant?
Yeah, I think that the grant included some upgrades, and, yeah. And then the museum, and Karen Madsen, you know, did a presentation yesterday to the board, talking about this transition to a nonprofit model and having the Friends of the Mendocino County Museum kind of take over a lot of the operational responsibilities and the gift shop and all of those things to, to make it a viable entity and really keep up the quality that they've, they have going on right now. So I've been enjoying working with the city manager on that, the strategic planning implementation group, and, and so that's moving forward, and the board again gave its approval to what's happening with the museum transition. So if anyone's interested in being on the Friends of the Museum, that's certainly a group that, you know, needs all the help they can get, and they're, they're really amping up their, you know, lifting up their game because they have to do, there's a lot involved in taking over the, the operations of the museum, but I think overall it will be a good thing. And then lastly, we had the Sherwood Road, which I know it's not in the city of Willet's, but it affects all of us because, you know, there's so many people who live up in Sherwood area, that we had that special assessment, I've been working on it for six years almost, and we had the election for whether people wanted to do a special assessment to maintain the FERCO and the Willet's Creek Trails for emergency, as emergency access routes. And so we just had the tabulation, the public hearing yesterday, the tabulation of the votes, and it overwhelmingly passed. And so, so that will be a good thing for, for the people who live in the Sherwood Road, Brook Trails, and the gates and all the subdivisions up there. It'll be, make that community safer. Another thing that we passed at the last board meeting was, we had a grant for like $290,000, and we, the grant was for some kind of work along, with software, and we got permission from the state to repurpose that grant to look at our vegetation abatement ordinance. So we're going to use that $290,000 to create an ordinance and a system within the county that can really deal effectively with vegetation management. And it's really important for the city of Willet's too, because there's so many areas right along the periphery that need some kind of abatement, you know, weeds growing up to, you know, housings and apartments, and so, so if we can take care of that, because before we were finding that to deal with some of these properties where the owners were really non-responsive, it was costing about $15,000 to go in there and get the, the ruling from the courts that we could go and do that vegetation abatement. So hopefully with this repurposing of the grant, we can, we can move it forward, and that's a, that will be helpful in the long run for, for creating effective, you know, vegetation management in these parcels. And lastly, we, we've applied for this $50 million brick grant through FEMA, and that is to do a lot of the vegetation abatement in the Brook Trails, Sherwood Road area, and it's 15, $50 million to do home hardening, vegetation abatement on a landscape scale, and all of those kind of things. That's a lot of money. We are awarded Phase 1 of it, which is about $3.5 million, and that will provide the, you know, the planning and figuring out which houses need to be treated and what areas and all of that that goes into the big project. So getting Phase 1 is kind of, of course, the first step, but getting the next phases, and we're very hopeful that that will all happen, so. So that's my report. If there's, if there's any questions or anything.
Hi, thank you for your report, John. Several weeks ago, maybe a couple of months ago even at this point now, you and I spoke about traffic safety on Sherwood Road, and you mentioned that you were in conversation with CHP about possibly doing a study to see if there were any measures that could be taken to help slow traffic and reduce the number of collisions up there. Any update on how those efforts are going?
Yeah, you know, the CHP said that they were going to do those studies, and I haven't heard back, so I will follow up on that, yeah, because that is important. Thank you for bringing that up again.
Any other council other questions?
Madam mayor, I have a question or a point for clarification. The city of Willet's produced a letter of support in regarding the building, the resilient community, committee, community grant program for the county.
That brick grant from FEMA, right.
Yes, and the idea behind that was to thin some of the forest coverage adjacent to the airport. So we're interested, and I'm glad I'm hearing that, you know, at least Phase 1. at least Phase One, and scoping the rest of the project is, been funded and moving forward. We're a willing partner in this whole process. We have to eliminate some trees adjacent to the airport for, to ensure safe flight operations. This is, as we're doubling up our efforts, if we can use county source FEMA money to help us remove some trees that the FAA wants us to eliminate, it's a good thing. So, appreciate it, John, thank you for the support.
Okay, and I'll pass that on to the team that's working on that grant specifically, so, okay?
All right, the public has an opportunity. If they have any questions or comments, you're welcome to ask. They have to pertain to what's been presented by Supervisor Hascheck. Does anybody have anything that they want to address? Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming each month and giving us an update. Next up will be the Little Lake Fire District. Is Chief Alvarez here?
Chief Alvarez was called out on a fire today. So I do have the written report, but it's at my desk. I will, I will distribute it to you guys after.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sure you all have heard the sirens going off quite often for the fire department. They've been, they've been working very, very hard. And in speaking to them, one of the things that, that came up is that because we have limitations with ambulance services, too often, our local fire department is having to respond to community aid. So, you know, hopefully, we can give them a little extra appreciation this time of year, and when it's not fire-related and maybe a neighbor's in need or whatnot, we can be good community members and step up and, and help out when maybe it's not emergency-related.
And cut your grass.
And please cut your grass. Yes, all right. Next up is introduction of Police Officer Garza, and I'll turn it over to Chief Dewey.
Mayor, members of council, my name is Chris Dewey. I'm the chief right now for the police department. And I just want to mention briefly how seriously takes citizen complaints in our community and, and how important it is to me and the entire department that we perform at the best of our abilities to keep our community safe and our officers do their very, very best. I can say that over 30 years of experience, finding quality officers is extremely difficult. And I'm excited tonight to introduce Alex Gar- Alex Garza, sorry, I'm a little nervous, so many people here. Alex comes to our community. He grew up in Shawnee, Oklahoma, his entire life through high school. And after high school, he spent a few years in San Diego. And then he's made Humboldt County his home for the last few years. He, he was in the trades. He decided that he wanted to go back to community college and started the College of the Redwoods. While he was at the College of the Redwoods, he got interested in law enforcement and decided he wanted to send himself to the academy. He saw that the Willets Police Department was looking for officers, and the Willets Police Department sponsored Alex to the academy. Alex is really unique. He, his strongest desire is that he would love to be a school resource officer. And the reason that he wants to come to our community is because of the ability to maybe someday be a school resource officer. He was impacted greatly when he was a young adult by a school resource officer back in Oklahoma. He wants to now give back to the community. I really commend him for choosing our little community and wanting to be here. Alex and his girlfriend, Ashley, they rented a house in our community. They're going to make our community their home. They're saving up to buy a house, and he wants to be here a long time. I'm extremely excited to present Alex to the city council and to the entire community.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alex, it's a pleasure to meet all y'all. Well, he already kind of said everything that is about me, so I don't really need to fill you in on anything else. Very thankful for the employment opportunity. I'm very thankful for all y'all for putting me through the academy at CR. I hope to help the community however I can. Ultimate end goal, like you said, is an SRO. So if I can help y'all in any way, shape, or form, I'm very interested in that. And in the future, if you need anything, I hope to really become acquainted, acquainted with all y'all. So I'll give you my cellphone and my card. Just reach out if you can. I want to be a community-oriented police officer and be a proactive kind of presence, I would say, well, within the city of Willets. So I appreciate all y'all, thank you for your time, and thank y'all again. It was really nice seeing everyone. I'm going to hand it off now.
Congratulations. Next is a notice, public hearing to conduct an annual review of rates and charges for various city services and adopt the accompanying resolution approving changes in certain city fees and charges effective September 1st, 2024. Our presenting staff member will be Manuel Orozco. He's our finance director. I'll turn it over to him to explain. And I believe we have a handout?
We have handouts.
You have the handouts. Thank you.
Is this what we got?
This is just a hot coffee.
So what I'm presenting to you today is the annual rate fees scheduled for all of our charges and various other services that go on throughout the city. One of the biggest parts of this is that we've taken it to account insight and input from one of the council, one of the council members in order to be able to show, you know, what has been changed and the notes associated with why the change, and also make the description a little bit more clearer. So as to not just cite the rules or regs, but actually just explain exactly what it is that the fee is. So everything in yellow is actually a change. And each of the departments were involved in actually coming up with the rates and everything like that, trying to keep it at cost. So with that being said.
Manny, before, before you move on, I believe that two of us here would be impacted by business license fees. So I would ask that the council would take a vote on everything except for business license fees and make that a separate motion so that we can participate. Any objections? Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, so at this point, I'm available for any questions that you may have about the charges and everything like that. If there's anything specific from a department, they're here to answer any questions as well.
Counsel, have any questions? Or would you like to hear from the public first?
I did have one question. And that was in the, I'm not sure where it is now. It was several days ago that I came across it. But, yeah, there's a tree maintenance permit. Oh, here it is, on page eight. And I was curious about that. It's a $250 fee. What constitutes tree maintenance? And if it is really truly maintaining trees and private property owners are being asked to, to pay $250 in order to maintain the trees? I don't want to discourage them from doing that by having that kind of a fee on it. And I wasn't, you know, it needs to be carefully defined what it is. So it was one that raised a question.
Member Strong, you raised that question. We looked at it, staff, and it got bounced around a little bit because it was my lack of knowledge exactly. But Walter can explain that to you. It's part of the encroachment permit process. So working with utility companies when they're working within the right-of-way. So, Walter?
What it's for is when a utility company such as PG&E applies for an encroachment permit within the cities right-of-way, and they have to be trimming around the tree, they'll charge for that as part of the encroachment permit.
Does it also apply to private owners?
If they went into, put it into the public right-of-way, but most of the time it's not the case. This is when they're trimming around vines and such like that. Or any utilities, it really doesn't affect anyone else. Only utility companies who typically have any encroachment permit.
Okay. Madam Mayor and council, I just want a little bit of clarification. Tagging on to what Manny has communicated to this point. This is a first comprehensive review and reconsideration of our fees and expenses that we pass on to applicants and property owners and business owners. Majority of these date back to 2015, 2017, 2019. So they have not kept up with the rate inflation, the value of money. We took this, previously, we made an attempt to present this to the council about a year or so ago. You asked us to return, take it back to the staff level, do a more comprehensive review, and explain why there was certain increases or why there was new fees or why there was consolidation. So in your packet, in the document, you have some notes and some explanation, but staff is here. We have staff coverage from each of the representative departments to explain why it's, you see the fees as they are presented.
Out of curiosity, for those who might be interested, is there anybody who is interested that hasn't had an opportunity to view the rate sheet? I'll, I'll tell you what, I'll pass this back. Yeah, we'll pass some extra copies since we've only got three in the room. I was going to say I can go over a quick summary, but here's three copies. You can look those over. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address us on this item? All right.
Madam Mayor, can I just say something? It's, it's in here, but I wanted to kind of make sure to get out to the community. I know a lot of people, a lot, especially I know a lot of younger people that pay with credit cards or cards, and there is a convenience fee that's here. They call it a convenience fee, it's really a pass-through fee from the credit card company. They charge us, and we pass it on to you for using the credit card. But it's 3% now, it used to be 2.5, and it's 3 now. So it's, it's a pass-through fee. I hate to say it, but you use your credit card, they're going to charge us, so we're just going to pass that on to you. So I wanted to kind of make that clear. Because I know a lot of people use credit cards these days.
It's just recognizing the increase.
Yeah, so we're, we're just recognizing that the credit card companies raise the fee to 3% from 2.5. And if next time they raise it to four, I hate to say it, but we probably will pass that on. I hate when I say convenience fee because it's, I guess it's for you, it's convenient to use a credit card, but that, that's the case. Same thing when you go to a restaurant, some restaurants pass that on. Some, some businesses pass on the credit. I know when I go to my mechanic, if you pay with a check or you pay cash, you know, you pay less than if you use a credit card. So I just wanted to bring that out.
Counselor, I have a question for Building Department. There is a fee on here, a new fee for residential backup generator, a flat fee of $150. Can you explain that to us, please?
Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez, council members. David Bolger, building official. Yes, thank you. So we've had that, since the PSPs, we've had quite a surge in people wanting backup generators. And so this basically makes it more of a over-the-counter permit rather than our standard building permit fees. And so what we did is we took the average fee. And so some people have a larger house, they need a larger generator, some have a smaller one. And so we're trying to make it a succinct, kind of over-the-counter permit so it's much easier to get that backup generator installed. And this just makes it a nice, clean fee for everybody. So some people pay, you know, $200, $250, kind of puts it out of the price range. And some people pay $120. And so we basically consolidated it to one flat fee.
So this is for somebody who wants to essentially wire their generator in to run their whole home. But if someone is just running a generator to keep their refrigerator going during a PSPS via extension cord for short periods of time, they don't need a permit for that?
Correct. This is a permanently installed generator with a backup, automatic transfer switch or a manual transfer switch. It has permanently wired to your house.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone have any other questions on the building fees? Want to? Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Do you have any questions?
I just, when would these take into effect, Manny?
September 1st.
Yeah, September 1st.
And then, I know you're looking through quickly. It was posted online, but I just want to give you an additional minute. Before I move on, do you want to make any public comment? Yep.
Good evening. Ragda Zakaria, 226 School Street. I don't know if this is on.
That's not going to project your voice.
Okay, that's why, we can't hear it in the back, too. Okay. Thank you for providing us with a copy. I just want a clarification, Madam Mayor. Is this based on talking to the surrounding cities and get an idea what they charge? And this is how this came up with the charges in this report?
Many, many times, it's about what does it truly cost the city to provide the services and then coming up with essentially a cost recovery. Other cities may charge more, other cities may charge less. From my experience, Willets charges less in most cases. So we're certainly not keeping up with cost for, for other cities. But there, with any one of those, you're going to have potentially a different rationale as to why that particular rate. Is there something that's-
I haven't got the chance really to go through line, but I'm just, like, details. The other question is regarding credit card charges. Didn't we last year, excuse me, install the system?
We haven't installed that part of the system.
Not yet?
Not yet.
That costs us $10,000, is that right?
Yes.
So it's not in-
It's, it's a module, a certain module within the system that would take in cash receipts and do accounts receivable. But we have not installed that yet.
But even if we had a credit card system, you're still going to have to pay a credit card fee, just like retailers. When any of you shop at any store in town and you don't use cash, you use a credit card, the retailer has to pay generally 3%. We have to give 3% back to the credit card processing company. It's going to be same thing similarly for the city.
Because I know, like, property taxes, if I pay with the credit card, they charge fees unless you send them a check. So can we send it just a check?
For the, you pay your water bill with a check? Absolutely, I pay my water bill every month.
Yeah, because every time I go online, it's very hard.
You can drop your payment in the box out front.
Or you can bring it to the, you can bring it to the front desk. And didn't we increase the sewer rate last year?
Sewer rates last year?
Mm-hmm. We increased it by like $90?
We do have a regular schedule. It's, it took effect on July 1st.
Correct.
July 1st.
Right, correct. And it's included in the property tax fees?
For the sewer portion?
Yeah, which we are, the only city does that because I called everybody around us. So I'm just asking, when the new system comes in, would we be able to take this out and not be included in the property taxes? Because I remember you said it's easier to use it so this way we can't chase people who are delinquent and so on.
I, I hear you. That item isn't before us, but we did hear, hear you about that. And I, I'm not fond of that either. But unfortunately, that's not an item that's before us right now to discuss.
When do you, we think the system will be in place? That we paid for $10,000?
Well, there's been a lot of progress in the, in the-
Sure.
In the finance department. The city has been working hard on audits, which has been a priority for us and many other things. We're hoping, we're hoping to get that module up, but our financial audits were our top priority.
Okay, so are you going to take a final decision tonight? Or this is just for thinking about it?
For, for this item? This is a, this is a public hearing, and there's a resolution to approve the changes. Okay, all right.
Just for clarification, we actively now accept credit card payments.
Correct.
So I, I didn't, we don't need that module now. We can accept payments.
And you charge 3%, which I don't do. I bring the check down here.
She's making a different argument.
Yeah, okay, it's just, okay, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
I seem to recall that when we were discussing the utilities module, it was going to have an option for people to pay their utility bill online. And there were several people in the audience who asked if at that point there would be a credit card processing fee or if it would be the, what is it called, ACH? Where you wouldn't have to. And it sounded like at the time, people would be able to pay online on the city's website without incurring a fee. But we're not there yet.
We're not. And that does incur a fee. It should usually be 30 to 60 cents for debit transactions. There's still a fee, it's just a much smaller fee.
Great, thank you. I do have one more question about the-
Yes.
I do have one more question about the fees, and this was for the water department. Perhaps this is in there, but I didn't see it. Is there a fee for, I'm trying to see who's here, is Scott here? Who is here for water? Okay. Is there a fee for someone who runs into, either intentionally or accidentally, one of our water hydrants?
Why do you have to bring that up? Because you just...
I'm just curious. We have a fee for people who cause damage to the city water facility.
That's a really good question.
Because I know that has caused quite a, I was gonna say stir, maybe that's not the right thing to say.
Yes, it does stir the cedars, yes.
Scott, would you mind stepping over here so that everyone can hear you?
We do charge, like, if someone, if we know someone who hits it, it usually goes against our auto insurance, we collect on that.
Okay, but is there a set fee, or is it based on damage done?
Damage done.
Damage done, and whether we can replace the fire hydrant or not. They're brand new, they're $4,500.
Okay. And then that would be the same if it's caused by a construction company, as we experienced last year, where they're paying essentially for the cost recovery?
That was private.
It was on...
We charged them on water.
Okay.
But it was private property, not the city's.
Okay.
So it's, we seek the reimbursement for materials and labor for the reinstallation.
Okay, thank you, that answered my question.
Thanks, Scott.
All right, any further comments? Anything further up here? If not, I'll entertain a motion with the exception.
I sort of feel like I would like more time to process this fee schedule. I don't know how the rest of you all are feeling. I also feel like, because there are people here tonight who would like to look further at this but haven't had time, maybe we should give ourselves two more weeks to, or until the next council meeting, to make sure we all have the questions answered on the new fee schedule. If no one else feels that way, I'm fine, but I just, if any of you have...
Are there any ramifications after you postpone?
No.
Go over here.
You can. I agree with Greta.
Okay. Thank you. All right, with that, we will put this item on calendar for a later date and have another public hearing. I encourage everyone to take a look at the agenda. Our next meeting is August 14th. And you can go to the city's website, or you can stop in and ask for a copy of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, like it was noted, this packet material is on our website. We'll also have paper copies available at the front counter with the proposed fee schedule. So if anyone wants a copy, if we don't have copies available, we can make a copy, just ask for it, not a problem.
All right. I'll move on to enactment of ordinances we have done before us this evening. So the next order of business is gonna be the consent calendar. We have the city council minutes from June 26th and the June 26th special meeting. Anybody from the public want to address the council on these minutes? It's just the record. All right, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd so move. One second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
I wasn't there, but I read them, and I...
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor, I'm reading. Yes, all right, the motion carries 5-0. Monthly activity reports. We have the business license activity report for June 2024. It is in your packet. Feel free to look and see what kind of activities take in place in June. In that packet, you'll also find the building activity report for June 2024. Does anybody have any questions on those items? Hearing none. We're going to recess as the Willet City Council and convene as the Willet Successor Agency. So your city council also serves as your...
Successor or planning commission?
Successor.
Planning commission.
Planning commission. It's missing on my thing there. There we go. All right. Here we are again. The discussion and possible action to approve the company resolution authorizing the execution of a shared parking agreement between Calvary Chapel, Willet's Church, and neighboring businesses including Coast Hardware, Safeway, and the Willet Smoke Shop. Our presenting staff member will be Connor Stack, he's one of our city planners.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. I believe this is the first time I've met some of you here, or I've presented before. Let's see if I can get this at an angle. Might need your help a little bit, Dolores.
Just key click in and fill up the tape. Now I'm in my spot.
There we go. This is a fun angle. All right.
There's multiple screens.
Thank you. Real helpful. My member, Madam Mayor of the council, today going over a parking lease agreement to allow at 775 Central Street, the parking for a congregation there for Calvary Chapel. Currently, they don't have enough parking with just the space and property there, but they've made a series of parking lease agreements with neighboring, neighboring businesses that is all on grants with Willet's city ordinances to allow for these additional parking spaces to be used. Just to give a bit of context, right here, we're looking at the proposed Calvary Chapel in Willet's, which right now has 14 spaces, they need a total of 49 spaces, so they need an additional 35. And they have signed parking agreements with three different businesses in the area that all sort of fulfill together that requirement. That would be Willet Smoke Shop, Safeway, and Coast Hardware. Here, next. Here are the associated municipal codes that allow for this additional parking. First one, I'll just read it fully. "All required parking spaces shall be located on the same lot or building site with the use they are intended to serve, unless sudden which they are located meets one of the following conditions. There is a transversible pedestrian route, not more than 400 feet in length, over and along public streets or walkways, or permanently established easements between the building or structures. It is to serve and the use of the property upon which the parking spaces shall be constructed, shall be secured with a written lease, subject to the approval of the Willet's Plan Commission." And then there's some other ways that can be fulfilled, but I provide attached in the packets the council should have, the parking lease agreement signed by all three businesses with the additional parking. And in addition, I have here the parking requirement for Calvary Chapel, which is auditoriums, theaters, and similar places of public assembly. One parking space for each five seats. A seat means 13 lineal inches of seating space, when seats consist of benches or pews. For auditoriums without permanent seats, the seat means seven square feet floor area. And here I have the floor plan for the seating space in Calvary Chapel with 140, sorry, 248 seats. So that's why I've done the calculation that it needs 49 parking spaces. And in general, I have a list of Calvary Chapel, all with the square footage, the parking spaces it has and how much it needs, and the parking spaces provided by all three of the businesses that have signed parking lease agreements associated, which more than fulfill their requirement. As a note, Coast Hardware currently is on Sunday closed, and that is the day in which Calvary Chapel plans to have most of its seats taken and most of its use in the area for their auditorium. So just, I'm gonna move up really fast here. Coast Hardware being the property directly adjacent to the proposed Calvary Chapel. So all of these spaces will be open on Sunday when they expect to have the most possible traffic. With all that in mind, the staff recommendation is to approve the three parking agreements to allow Calvary Chapel Willet's to act as a gathering space by increasing its required parking and allowing it to move forward with its proposed site plan.
For clarification?
Yes.
Was it deemed that they needed 49 spaces based on the square footage? Or the interior space?
No, not the square footage on the interior space, but rather the...
The pew space?
The amount of seats. So they have 248 seats in their pro-site plan, and so 49 is the calculation based on our municipal code of that.
Okay. And then I have heard from a few people over concerns over Safeway parking. Could you just bring that map up real quick, of the Safeway area that was identified? I noticed on the map that you had three spaces that were identified. Did you pull out the EV charging stations that are in there? And did it, does it then take all of the available spaces on the north side in the first two rows, Sunday mornings? I'm just trying to be clear, as people are asking me about what the parking situation will look like, and what does Safeway actually have left for parking? Because I'm not sure who owns it now, but Victor Hansen owned the other portion of the parking.
So I started coloring in different sections, but it started to get pretty dirty up there. Let me see if I can move it back down to the graph. So in total, Safeway needs 138, ha, sorry, has 138 parking spaces. And 26 that they are, are extra, are extra spaces. Those are beyond their required minimums in the three spaces. So it's not like there are an exact XYZ parking spaces within them are reserved, it's that these are the excess beyond what they are required to have with there.
I think, maybe, Mayor, what you're talking about is, in Safeway Lot itself, some of that was owned by a different owner, and then, and some of that parking associated was with the other businesses that were owned by the other owner of the complex. And then Safeway proper, because at one point, they actually, you could tell when Safeway paved, what didn't get paved was belonged to the other party. And so some of the parking out in that parking lot isn't necessarily Safeway's to give, so to speak. I was just wondering if you took that into account? Or whether you counted spaces in the whole Safeway Lot?
Because two to two and a half rows are private property and not Safeway's. And I'm just wanting to know, were those included as a matter of record? Or an assumption, or how do we come about that?
The way I came upon that was, one, counting, and two, the number I counted was matched up with the signed parking lease agreement of the available spaces that the store manager of Safeway, proprietor, has signed when they did their signed agreement, saying, "We have this many excess spaces beyond that we have access to that we can give for the church to use."
Okay. I'm not objecting to the church being their use, but I am going to have to be the person that, when someone comes to me to make sure that I fully understood the decision we made. And if there's, like, hold on, you have to wait, but you will. We have to make sure that we understand the facts and that the facts line up with the facts so that we're fully informed. And I'll turn, I think there's a question here, so I'll move it. Did you have a question? Match?
So my understanding is that they aren't designated spots. They are just free to use up to 26 spaces in the Safeway parking area in order to meet their requirement. And those are extra as far as Safeway's required amount.
Yes.
Okay. What is the time period of these lease agreements? I'm wondering if there's, you know, some future management that changes their mind, then what?
There is, there is a, I believe it's 2029 is the end of the lease agreement signed. It's on the lease agreement I have provided you guys. And at the end of that, there is nothing in place yet.
That would be a concern for me, anyway, that I would assume that the Calvary Church is gonna wanna stay there for quite some time. So I wonder if those are, you know, if there's any kind of commitment to be able to renew those leases so we don't, in five years, have a problem of people wanting to go to church and having no place to park.
I believe the lease provides that if it expires in 2029, something to the parties want to extend it, so I would assume the parties would negotiate, would pro-negotiate an extension, and so getting close to that.
Go ahead. I did have one small concern about the Coast Hardware agreement. It's fantastic that they're closed on Sundays, which coincides with the church's need for the parking spaces. However, as a business owner myself, I know that store hours change. And when staffing changes, and you find yourself being able to staff another day, it's often in your financial best interest to do so. So if Coast Hardware at some point decides that they need to or want to open on Sundays, then what happens? And if, I'm wondering if either your department or the church has looked into a backup plan so that in the event that they lost those, that access to those Coast Hardware spaces, are there more spaces at nearby businesses that could accommodate their congregants? I know that for this, for this five-year chunk, we don't have to worry about that because you already have a signed agreement. But going forward, if things change, I just want to make sure that there's some kind of a backup plan.
There's the further agreements and negotiations once it reaches...
Right, so Coast Hardware would be committed for that first five-year term to allow for that use on Sundays. And so I would, I would assume by that that they would be bound to allow that and not change their, not change their dates to allow for Sunday sales of their business. I don't know what kind of financial arrangement was made between the parties, but Coast Hardware, by entering into a lease agreement, is agreeing that they could use X number of spaces on Sunday. And changing their dates of operation to be open on Sunday would be consistent with their lease date.
Right, and like I said, I understand that this is locked in for this first five-year period, which is fantastic. I just, you know, I mean, we often see things that, here at the dais, where, "Oh, it was an agreement five years ago, and now it's fallen apart." So I want to make sure, and everyone's thinking about alternatives.
Right, I'd be concerned if it was a 25, 30-year lease or something, but here, it's not that long. And I assume that Coast Hardware has taken that into consideration and has agreed that, well, for this five-year period, we can make this agreement.
And the street, I was thinking the street traffic, or the street parking can't be part of the equation, but in that area, there is plenty of street parking, and it's not, it's not heavily used. So I would imagine that...
Even with the street parking, I don't mean to interrupt at all, but when we were looking at this originally, we wanted to make sure, because nearby is a lot of residential areas, we wanted to make sure that the commercial parking could take on that burden and that the congregation, the church, wouldn't spread out and be any sort of problem for the neighboring residential lots.
That makes sense as well. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to the public. Thank you. You're welcome to go ahead and step up to the podium. You have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name's Dennis Chatty, I'm a member of, excuse me, Calvary Chapel Willet's. I have been since its inception, which was going on eight years ago. And over that period of time, we have had to move from location to location to location because we have grown, and that's because of the outreach we've had in this community. We've reached youth, we've reached older people, and now we're involved in taking care of the homeless. And so we need a larger facility so we can continue with the outreach we have in this community. And we'd like to thank the council for their help in the past, especially law enforcement, because they've been very, very good with us when we've had all of our facilities out at the city park, you know, just right across the street. Willet's PD, Mendocino County Sheriff's Department, were there to make sure everything went properly. And we've put a lot of effort into reaching this community, especially for the youth. And we have a tremendous program, and we want to continue with that. But we won't be able to unless we are allowed to grow. And this facility that we have here will be a great way to grow until we get larger, and we have to find another place, which hopefully we'll have to do that at some point in the future. But, you know, we just, we love this community, we love to serve this community, we want to continue to do that, we want to reach people for the Lord, and we want to reach people for each other, and just, and this is the only way that we can do that because we are, we have outgrown the small building we were in before. So I just would appreciate your indulgence and your support of this parking variance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Just note that, like with any topic, it's our job to do due diligence, to ask questions. It doesn't mean we're for or against, we're just trying to make sure that we ask the necessary questions to hold ourselves accountable when we're asked.
Definitely, thank you. I'm Haley Christensen, I also go to Calvary Chapel Willet's. I'm also employed by the general contractor, Ian J. Remodeling, with Robert Ford, and I'm helping the... helping the process for this whole, this whole project for this, for the church. I just wanted to try and help clarify some of those questions. First, Mayor, the question about the location of the parkings. We, we walked through the parking lot with the, with the manager of Safeway and he pointed out the section that's right next to Safeway, in between Safeway and Coast Hardware, that area there. So there wouldn't be any impeding on the charging parking spots or any of the front parking or the gas station parking or those other businesses on the other side. There was plenty of open parking on that side, well away from the entrance and prime parking for the, for the shoppers. So that's where we kind of plan on utilizing if needed. Council member, I would like to address your question. Can you repeat it though for me?
I was just wondering if you had thought of any backup nearby businesses that might also have safety available if Coast Hardware changed their operating hours?
Yes, definitely. Well, as far as operating hours with Coast Hardware, Wendy, the owner, we are close with, she also has attended our, our church as well. She's very open to helping us in any way, shape or form, even after those five years. We've, we are in very close communication about that possibility because that was brought up. We did talk about it. She doesn't plan on opening on Sundays at any time that she knows of. She said if it does happen, we would, we said as far as a church that we'd be more than happy to address that and see how we can help as a church as well as help her and vice versa. And then as far as talking with any other businesses, we actually talked to the whole strip down from, from Coast Hardware to the church building and on that whole strip, Chevron. And then actually, we even spoke to the auto place here. I can't remember the name of it right now, but the owner, Jim, he was very happy to accommodate us in any way. Unfortunately, it wasn't brought forward to you guys because of the 400-foot feet rule. But he said if in any way he can help, he was definitely agreed to do that. Of course, all the pedestrians would utilize the sidewalks and the street lights and everything else to do what they need to do. But all of the neighboring businesses have been very accepting and wanting to help any way they can.
Thank you so much. You put me at ease.
Good, thank you. I hope I answered all of the questions that there was. Okay, thank you.
All right. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, I'm going to bring it back up here and, you have a question?
Just a question for our planner. So let's, again, five years from now, if we get to that point, would we be putting a tickler in the file to contact them and say, get your agreements in place for another five years or something? Is that, or will we wait till they're?
Yes. Parking. Yeah. The planning and parking and I assume business license when it comes down to it will be contingent upon their organization being able to fulfill those parking spaces to continue because it's not like it's being grandfathered. If anything similar, they're able to function there because they have these parking agreements. So if they don't continue to have these parking agreements, they won't be able to function as intended.
Oh, okay. So that would be in the file that it's not a grandfathered thing.
Yes.
They'd have to go through this due diligence again at that point. All right.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Any further comment? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. Congratulations. Before we move on, I also want to say thank you. I do know that you are doing, many of your members are doing good works when it comes to the homelessness and we know that's needed in our community. So thank you. All right. We're going to adjourn as a Willets successor planning. I'm reading it in a stymped drawn. Apologies. We're going to reconvene to the regular city council and leave the planning question. My special focus. Yeah. I should have just read it. My. Then that also means they're responsible for. I think that's worth noting just for the record. So I'm going to have you just. Before we move on, I'm just going to have Walter calling our, he's going to make a clarification to a question that I had.
On the Safeway parking lot that you were talking about and the adjacent businesses, recently the city did an inspection with our waste treatment personnel on a lateral sewer line for sale purposes, for an inspection of the line. And it was being sold, the separate parcel that have the other businesses and strip next to Safeway. And I believe Safeway was the final bidder. They, they have now purchased that whole strip center and the whole parking lot. So they control the whole parking lot. And I'll confirm that, but I believe Safeway is now the whole owner.
Responsible for the parking lot?
Yes.
And the weed abatement?
And the weed abatement. They've been, and they've been sent a letter to clean that up already by the city, yes.
Wonderful. We look forward to them cleaning it up. All right. We're going to move on to city manager reports and recommendations and I'll turn it over to city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first item is a presentation by the Mendocino County or Mendocino Land Trust. Mr. Kramer is here to present. This is an item that is before you to seek a letter of support for a conservation easement that is being assembled by the land trust. It immediately doesn't impact the city, but in a roundabout way it does. If we can protect the surrounding natural resource lands and the ag lands that are but our community, that will channel development back to where it belongs, where the services are in place in our community. And it allows the open space and the natural resource lands and the ag lands that surround our community to remain in that intended role. So from there, Mr. Kramer will present the information to the council.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Conrad Kramer. I'm the executive director of the Mendocino Land Trust. Our offices are in Fort Bragg. We have protected 40,000 acres around the county, mostly using conservation easements. So they state private ownership, but we take ownership of the development rights. We either buy them or we accept donations of them. So yes, almost all of our land is protected with conservation easements. We also have completed 20 public access sites in our history. We're all on the coast. A few years ago, we committed ourselves to trying to do more public access projects inland. And we also committed ourselves to try to do land conservation and public access projects in a way that benefit disadvantaged communities. At Folsom Ranch, we have our first big opportunity to do a big public access project inland. And it's also a tribal land return project. Folsom Ranch came up for sale a year and a half ago. We've been working on this for that long. And we decided we wanted to see if we could protect it, which means we wanted to keep it from being developed, subdivided. And we also wanted to find a way to open it to the public and find a way to do a tribal land return on, on a portion of it. And so we've been working for a long time to do more work inland. We also recently brought on three new board members from inland, two from Willets, one is Tony Sherez, another one is Tom Herman here in town, another is Allison Purnell from up in Leightonville. So Folsom Ranch is 7,000 acres. As I mentioned, it came up for sale a year and a half ago. The only way that we could think of protecting it and opening it to the public was to see if we could get BLM interested in, in, in buying part of it. And they indeed were interested, but they couldn't buy the whole thing. And so we saw a great opportunity to see if we could raise some money so that three local tribes could, could take ownership of part of it. And we were able to get $3.8 million from state funding for, for the tribal acquisition, which would be 1,700 acres. BLM is committed to taking the rest, opening it up for public access, multiple use public access. There will be a requirement from the state funding that the tribes have for some limited public access as well. The land that the tribes take will have deed restrictions on it, so they won't be able to build anything, but they will be able to steward the land, encourage the growth of traditional foods and materials that they can gather. They will also take, they're taking ownership of the buildings on the ranch, which are two houses and a barn and other infrastructure, crushing infrastructure because BLM doesn't want to take ownership of any buildings. And the tribes will also take ownership of the best pasture on the ranch, which is irrigated by two small reservoirs. So that's the basic project. And what I'm really here for is to ask you to consider signing two letters of support for us. And I'm sorry that time is short, but we've, we and our advisors have determined that now is the time to strike and asking for emergency funding for BLM politically is just the right time. So we really need that letter and we will soon need a letter for grant application that will be going to the Wildlife Conservation Board and for funding. So when you sign one, we're hoping you'll sign the other. And other than that, I'm here to ask questions. If you get too far into the weeds, I'll ask Tony to help me.
Do you want to start?
I just want to say thank you. I'm strongly in support of this and I'm so grateful to hear that MLT is looking to find more opportunities to create public access inland. One of the most regular things I hear from townies is, we live in the middle of this beautiful county and there's so few places to go hiking. There's so few ways to get out into property if you don't already own it. So thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you. And I will say that we're also looking very strongly at possibly doing a segment of the Great Redwood Trail going north out of Willets.
I'm strongly in support of this as well and I'm glad to see that some of the tribal will be restored as well. It's definitely a good thing.
I should have mentioned, yeah, the, the land will be owned by one tribe, but it will benefit three tribes, which the Sherwood Valley Tribe, the Potter Valley Tribe and the Cato Tribe.
That's good news. All right.
Which tribe will actually own it?
Sherwood Valley Tribe will own it to start with and then they can figure out in their time whether they'd like that to continue or whether they would actually like to divide up the three, the 1,700 acres between the three tribes. As I said, they won't be able to develop it. We're also pleased that the pretty high-quality pasture line will be preserved as ag.
Any other questions or comments from council?
One more comment?
Yes.
Thank you for waiting sufficiently.
Sounds like you have a full letter of support, but it is on the agenda. So is there anybody from the public that wants to address us on this item? All right.
I just want a question about the, the location of the property. And I couldn't tell from the packet exactly where it is.
It's, it's about 25 minutes out Hurst Willets Road, just after the asphalt ends and it becomes, becomes a dirt road. It's before the bridge.
All right. So with my understanding, we, is there any objections to a letter of support? Hearing none, you have a full support. Do you want to motion on this item? City manager? You do?
Yes, that we show there's full support.
Okay. We have a motion?
A second for two letters.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for both letters. I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. Motion carries 5-0 with full support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing.
That feels like good work.
Should have been under goodwill effort tonight. All right.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So item 8B is a return item. This was first presented to you previously that the food bank, the Willets Community Services, is operating at a budget deficit due to several outstanding items or things affecting them, both internally and externally, increased need for their services within the region. They have, like I said, they're operating at a deficit and will be even further behind as they move forward. They came forward to the council asking for additional financial assistance and the council instructed the city manager and myself to look at what we could do with the existing ARPA budget allocation. They previously, as one, they were one of the community services that were identified to receive a one-time allocation of 25,000. When this item was presented to the council in a request for assistance, the instructions was, was there an opportunity to fund additional? Can we move money around? And there's an opportunity. If you look in your packet, there was a recommendation to remove 25,000 from two large ticket items that hasn't been initiated yet because we're still trying to get our head around what those would be. So they haven't been fully scoped. So that is money that is underutilized and could be applied to the request that is before you for financial assistance.
The food bank does goodwill and the ARPA stands for American Recovery Plan Act. And it seems only fitting that any support for the community services of food bank should come from ARPA, as in my mind, that is, you know, it's the reason that we have a recovery plan act.
Is there any other comments from council?
So just again, a clarification is that, is the amount that you're proposing, the entire 50,000 in addition to the 25,000?
They already have received that 25 and the other 25 distributions occurred to those other groups as well. I think they, council received thank you notes if you haven't received them, if you have, so.
Yeah.
It'd be 75, not.
So it would be, it would be 50,000 now or up to 50,000 on top of the 25,000 that they received from the earlier distribution.
And, and that is borrowed or it's taken out of allocations to these other sort of longer, bigger projects that?
Plan implementation and rec-growth improvements.
Yeah. I guess I'm, I'm a little bit concerned. I mean, I certainly want to support the community services food bank as much as we can reasonably do, but I also don't want to not make progress on rec-growth projects. So I'm just wondering.
And if I can maybe put your mind at ease, we didn't, right now, and Dusty Dooley with community development, working with his staff, they're making headway with improvements to the parks through the Clean California Grant. We only have so much ability to move projects along and keep the bulls in the air at the same time. So the focus with community development and services and facilities was to focus on the Clean California, Clean California Grant application, move that, get those projects done and then come back and look at what was recommended through the East Commercial Street Corridor Plan, what we have got from public engagement regarding improvements. So we have some time. There will be improvements made to public facilities, i.e. the parks, in the near future. We have that covered through grants. So we want to get that taken care of and then move forward with implementing the ARPA budget allocation for those.
You weren't at the last meeting, so you didn't get the opportunity to hear from the public and the food bank. But without this 50,000, the food bank could fall. They're, it's critical that they get these funds and I, for one, wouldn't be comfortable knowing that people are going hungry. So it, it really is important. And it's not all the money that they need. This is, this is a stopgap to help them have the time to seek out some other funding. And there are, they don't have a lot of other resources because, you know, members of the community, for whatever financial reason, haven't been able to donate to the food bank as much in this last year or two, three years through COVID. So there's. So there's been a decrease in the amount of money that they're receiving in donations and then they haven't been able to secure some of their typical funding for other grants and things like that. So this is really just trying to help them limp along, you might say, while they try to find another source.
And I just would like to add, Madge, the 275 that we allocated of ARPA funds for both land use plan implementation and the rec-growth facility improvements were really sort of made up numbers. I mean, we didn't have hard and fast projects that were tied to those. It was when we were looking at the whole ARPA funding that we started allocating, you know, our wish list of where we want those things to go. So I'm, I, I feel confident that, you know, we can still do good work with both the land use implementation and the rec-growth with $225,000 going to each of those as opposed to two, or 250 going to each of those as opposed to 275. Whereas, you know, shaving that amount off and giving to the food bank is going to give them an essential shot in the arm and not, you know, hugely impact our ability to get some things done on both of those projects.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, not having that project was really gave us the ability to work with the numbers.
Is there anybody from the public that wants to address us on this item? Go ahead, step up.
Well, thank you so much for your consideration on this matter. You know, we have been doing all that we can to look into other grants and, you know, I've been in contact with two grant writers. I've been writing grants myself. So we're hoping that the 50,000 will buy us, like you said, enough time, you know, and hopefully we'll get that grant that we had in the beginning of August, the T.R. Erickson Grant, which will buy us enough time to look into additional fundraising sources and grants. I know that Vice Mayor Gonzalez had mentioned that they used to work with us and partner with us, so I'd like to speak with him as well and look into some other possibilities with the town, with the SB 1383 program, where we can do food recovery and also look into like receiving grants and stuff in the future with that, as well as shelter programs with HUD programs and different opportunities. Because we can provide a lot of services and be really flexible in those services to see what kind of grants are available to provide the services for the community that we can, you know, under those grant programs, you know, whether it's for children, for seniors, for veterans, for homeless, or through the SB 1383 grocery recovery program. So I really appreciate your consideration in this matter because it really will help and it'll make such a difference in the lives of those we serve. One of the questions that I had gotten from someone who sent in a donation was they asked, okay, isn't it more expensive in your new place? And actually, you know, because of Mike Greggs and his family, our rent is only $500 a month, so it's less than half than what it used to be. And our PG&E is, gosh, we had a $12 bill and a $20 bill and a $40 bill. So, you know, it's been very low, so our overhead, we've, we've really cut down as much as we can. But this last meeting, we were considering, should we cut one of the days out? And it would just implode the place because our staff would have to all leave because they wouldn't make enough money. And, you know, I really looked at it and I said, oh my goodness, you know, and, and, you know, it just was overwhelming to me to even think about that possibility. So with that $50,000, it would buy us enough time to be able to hopefully get that next grant. And then we'd have, you know, six months to come up with additional funding and that type of thing. So thank you so much for your consideration in this matter.
Thank you. Did you want to speak?
No, she covered a lot of stuff. I had some questions and she covered it.
All right. I'll bring you back up here.
I'll make a motion. The second one is presented.
Okay. I'll second the motion myself. All right, and call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you for your good work.
Thank you so very much for your, thank you.
Thank you for your work.
All right, and then we're back to verbal response.
Yes, I just want to, just to kind of bring this round, choose circle here. When we, when staff presented the proposed project list, we had a much larger, larger list and we pared it down. I had full expectation that there was going to be give and take. You know, we were looking at projects, we were looking at old recommendations, goals. Focus has changed. And, and I had full expectation that as we move forward with some projects and maybe some projects we just couldn't lift at the time or as we, you know, due to staffing limitations or they were in conflict with something else, that there would be requests coming forward. And this is the protocol that would, would happen. We would do a request, it would be justification, we would do amended resolution and address the project allocation. So in future, you may see something like this either driven by a staff request due to a twist and churn in a project or something that council wants to reemphasize. The point here is it's not set in stone. We can adjust, we can be fluid, we can adjust to a community needs. Okay?
I like that.
As part of the original resolution, and it's in the amended resolution, staff is required to provide quarterly updates on how we are proceeding with the implementation of projects. And since the council adopted the project list, working with staff, we have identified four priority projects that we are moving forward on. That's what we identified as the most critical, we, we had the capacity, and it dovetailed nicely with other items that we are trying to accomplish. And the four projects are the lighting installation at the public parking lot over at Wood and School Street, that is moving forward. And thank you, Walter, he's been doing a lot of yeoman work on tracking down the components for that. That is going to be a solar installation. So the, we got away from, you know, utilizing conduit that we didn't think was there and then we found out it was there, but we didn't know the quality of it. So that's taken care of. Right now, we're basically at the verge of ordering the items, the masks and the poles and everything, all the components, and we're looking to have that in before the fall. So we can have that for, we can have light. So that'd be a good thing. Another project that has had some identification through community engagement and public planning effort, emphasis, was a Highway 20 park gateway sign. We're looking to utilize that park space, that ribbon of green that is on the south side of Highway 20. We're looking at a couple of options. We took some templates that were devised for the East Commercial Street Corridor so we can have similar design motif. The original concept came in way beyond budget and we're actually looking to modify that and move forward. This is not going to replace the sign that the Rotary Chamber of Commerce and business owners have advocated for. And Dusty's been working on that effort and that is gaining momentum. We're already working with Caltrans on gaining approval on that. So there's going to be, you know, we're going to be looking at placement, some signs there. Want to be a directional sign with some character to remind visitors and motorists that there is a community at, if you turn left at that intersection or head north on Main Street. And this other sign is a gateway sign to announce that this is the community of Willets and, and fit into that character. Hopefully, we can fill in the rest of that area with arc insulation. So trying to team that together. Another high priority was the community center renovations. We utilize that a lot. The community enjoys that space. It needs some attention and we're looking at making improvements and to improve its usability and its ambiance and attractiveness to various tenants and guests throughout the year. Right now, in the summer, we kind of are low in that and we're trying to get that work done before the fall season when we have holiday events and other activities going into the winter there. And the last one, and unfortunately, my audience left, but we are looking to do an urban forestry ordinance. And that is teaming up on the management plan that was adopted by the council back in 2022. This is, I've heard this very clearly from the community as well as the council and staff want to deliver this. Now we have the means and we're moving forward with that. So we're at the stage where we're drafting an RFP to do a consultant selection. And at this point, I'm glad we heard comments from the public that want to be engaged in that process. We're definitely going to reach out to them as we're, we're not ready yet to do a full engagement. People can come down and talk to staff, talk to me, talk to myself and what the focus is. We're not there yet, but we believe we have a pretty good intent of what the cover, what elements we need to cover in that document through the consultant selection process. And those are the four projects.
Any follow-up questions? Any questions from the public? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, department recommendations, these are action items. We have an item to adopt a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between the City of Willets and the Willets Police Officers Association effective July 25, 2024 to June 30, 2025. And I'll turn it over to Karen Stevenson.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Karen Stevenson, your HR manager. The new document that I provided you was just because I found some clarifications that I needed to put on there on Article Nine, Compensation A. In the past, our, our prior contract had seven steps and we reduced it down to five and I'll go over those. Under F2, there was a 36-hour criteria before the FTO would get OIC pay, which is Officer in Charge. The reason for that is we have only one sergeant and he can't work 24/7, 7 days a week. So we really do need to rely on our field training officers, which is FTO, in order to provide the support, the guidance, the leadership to our newer officers. And in speaking with the chief, our post requirement is to have three FTO in order to have an, an FTO program. And so we have three FTOs and they will be scheduled at opposite ends of the current sergeant so that we have the ability to always have somebody onboard that our new officers can go to. So that's the reason for that. And then on the last, very last page, the holiday leave, which I will go into, the very last line said approximately 4.25%, and that is exactly what we're doing. So I will go into those. These items are on the agenda summary that I have. So the association currently has in their MOU the ability to put up a bulletin board for union communication. At the last moment, they kind of had a different idea, but we're going to choose to leave the, the ability to put up a bulletin board the way it is in our current contract. So there's really no changes on that. The three and one-half percent cost of living increase in the one-year MOU, which shall be reflected in the city standardized salary schedules, which we'll be talking about right after this. We went to a one-year contract because we really need to get a strong handle on where we are financially. And until we get our, our utility billing, financial system up and running, we really don't have a full grasp and we are working to, to move forward in that.
I'm, I'm a little confused. Are you speaking, when you say the rationale behind it, are you speaking from an HR standpoint or are you speaking as the, from a city standpoint?
I'm speaking from the city standpoint. That's just the negotiation tactics that we went.
I was just a little confused because it's council who was, who?
Right.
Part of, part of negotiation. So I was, okay, I was a little.
That's okay. I was meaning that we had agreed to bring that up and we were successful in getting that agreement. Because typically, it's a three-year. Effective the first full pay period in July, the current seven-step pay schedule will be reduced to five steps by eliminating the bottom three steps and adding an additional top step. So basically, what was known as step four will now be known as step one. And Manny and I have worked very closely and we engaged the union to make sure that that process went over smoothly. And this, in addition, impacts another item down below, which I'll talk about. The city and the POA agreed to meet and confer prior to January 2025 to identify reasonable benchmark cities for total salary compensation study. The study will be paired by an agreed-upon third-party entity and the costs will be shared between the POA and the city. Special assignments are compensated with a 5% salary differential. You'll see on page two of the separate document what those, what those items are for special assignments. You will see that we added CTO, which is the Communication Training Officer, and FTO, which is the Field Training Officer. And what we, well, what the chief quickly notified, noticed is that we really need a coordinator all year round because it's a large program to manage and you have to continue to update the documents and go to additional trainings. And it's really hard to do when you're the sergeant and you've got all the other tasks. So we did have one separate for dispatch, which is the CTO, and FTO for the, for the patrol. And again, it's a 5% so that they're doing it all year round. Now, if they get asked questions, they don't get any additional money because they're already the FTO coordinator. But it is something that, the FTO coordinator is a current FTO and that individual will be paid all year round so that if people come up and ask them questions, it's no extra. Does that make sense? Okay. So due to a staffing deficit, we've only got the one sergeant. Again, it's making sure that, that FTO is available so that we're not calling at all hours to the one sergeant or to the chief to get guidance. We want only one OIC or FTO to get this additional 2.5% per pay period. Number seven is, the way we have it now is we have a series. We have Officer One, Two, and Three. We have Sergeant, and then we have Sergeant Advanced, and that's based on their post-certification. So many years ago, we created this series, no different than what we have in IBW, like Water Plant Operator One, Two, and Three. However, when we had worked with LCW to find out, you know, where are we out of compliance with CalPERS, this was one of the items. In order to make that 5% persable, it really does need to be a special pay assignment, not as we have it set up where there is a particular pay schedule. So in other words, a, a advanced sergeant would be 81C and a sergeant who just has an intermediate would have been 79C. So, because each schedule's 2.5%. But the bottom line is to, all, all officers, regardless of their rank as an officer, whether it's One, Two, or Three, will get Officer straight pay. Then the 5% will be added on in the backend, just like the other special pays are assigned. Any questions about that?
No, I think we're all pretty well informed.
Okay. And then what, a big major change is, right now, we bank holidays. So officers, whether they work or not, if they are to work, they get time and a half for that, where IBW gets double time and a half. For the police officers, for that eight hours of extra holiday that they would normally have gotten if they'd been double time and a half, that goes into a bank accrual and that gets paid out currently in November. And what we've elected to do now is to spread that out as they're going through the year and that 88 hours breaks out to 4.25% on top of their pay. And this will eliminate any issues because currently the MOU is written is that this banked holiday is paid out at the second pay period in November. It just so happens this year, that's prior to Thanksgiving, so they would get an additional four holidays. But the way the PO, POA MOU is written, it's if the employee resigns. But if we terminate an employee, there's, and they've already been paid out, they don't, they don't have to pay that back. And so this kind of eliminates that and it benefits the employee as they go forward. Are there any questions?
Nope. This tentative agreement essentially just states that council through negotiations and our, our. and our negotiating leaders have come to a tentative agreement, which will memorialize this evening, that we support. Essentially, we support increasing wages and compensation to our police department. We understand that we want well-trained and people in our law enforcement, we want them to be well-trained, and we want the ability to recruit a good force.
Recruit and retain.
Yep, absolutely. Any other comments?
I would just like to go on record as saying I wish we could strike the K-9 officer as a special feature. We've been burned on that quite a few times over the years and I'm sure it's a valuable tool for you to have in your, in your pocket. It just doesn't seem like it's worked out in Willets and I wish it wasn't an option. That's just me saying that.
Councilmember Connie, I did raise that issue, or we raised that issue at negotiations. It's a one-year contract and so they did not want to negotiate the removal of that at this particular juncture, but it will come up again in next negotiations.
And we currently don't have a K-9 officer.
Right.
I figured that's something we could take up later. All right. Are there any clarifying questions? Anybody from the public? Hearing none. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move. One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to the memorandum of understanding between the City of Willets and the Willets Police Officers Association. With that, I'll call for a vote. Councilmember Connie? Yes. Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
And the next item is for you as well. Approve resolution for 2024-2025 Classification and Compensation Schedule.
Right. And so the compensation schedule reflects the current positions that we have budgeted for. And so we will be altering only those sections for the PD. In January, the new contract should hopefully take effect for IBW. We have yet to negotiate that. And at that time, it would be altered again and brought back forth for council approval to include all of the IBW and unrepresented positions.
And with that, we removed one position?
Removed.
Did we remove one position?
We, from, we removed, not a position, but we removed the number of people in those positions.
Okay.
Actually, the lieutenant.
Oh, that's right. That's, I apologize.
That's what I was
We haven't filled it in so long, so yes, we did remove the lieutenant position.
Okay. All right. Any questions from council? Any questions from the public, comments? All right. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll still move.
All right. We have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor? Yes. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to Item 9C, Delegate Authorization to Execute Master Agreements, Program Supplemental Agreements, Funds Exchange Agreements, and/or Fund Transfer Agreements with the California Department of Transportation to the City Manager. Presenting staff member will be Walter Colan, our Services and Facilities Director.
Madam Mayor and City Council, every year, the City of Willets applies for grants to the Department of Transportation's Local Partnership Program. And what we use these funds for are transportation projects, and specifically, we've been earmarking them towards pavement preservation projects that we have. This April, we were granted $400,000 towards our 24 pavement preservation project. This is a formality to accept funds and ask that the City Manager be allowed to enter contracts and accept the funding and sign off. We are guaranteed the funds, we just need to have them signed for officially and designate the City Manager as that person to sign contracts and accept funding from the state.
Any follow-up questions? Hearing none. Anybody from the public? All right. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move.
We have a motion.
You're expected to make a comment.
Yes.
Three times this evening, making a motion, councilmembers say, I so move, but they don't say what they're moving. So it probably should be, I move approval of the staff recommendation.
I move it's, I so move the recommendation of the site, which is C, nine, nine department recommendations and action items.
The execution of these agreements?
True.
Yeah? Okay. All right. We have a motion and we have a second. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez? Yes. All right. The motion carries five zero. Moving on to Item 9D, Adopt a Resolution Awarding a Construction Contract to Argonaut Construction Inc. for the Steelwater and Sewer Main Replacement, Project Number 2023-08, and Approve a Budget Amendment to Cover Higher Than Anticipated Costs in an Amount Not to Exceed $1,709,505, and Authorize City Manager to Execute the Contract and Approve Construction Change Orders Up to a Cumulative Total of 10% of the Total Contract Amount. And again, Walter Colan, our Services and Facilities Director, will address this and why it's so important.
What is five?
And why it's so important.
So this is part of our program to replace the aging pipes in infrastructure water system here that have contributed to brown water within the community. These streets, which there are several, it's one of the most complex projects we'll do this year, will be eliminating the majority of the oldest pipes in the city. And this will make a difference in our water quality. When this project was identified a couple of years ago, it was strictly a water project. Last year, it was also identified that because of the proximity of sewer laterals and that intermix within those pipes, it made sense to combine it as a sewer lateral project also, take care of those problems. We're digging up the road one time, repaving, striping one time. If we separated it out, there'd be higher significant costs. We had a mandatory walkthrough. We put this out to bid, public bid. We received two people who came to the mandatory walkthrough, but in the end, last week, on the 18th, we only received one bid from Argonaut Constructors, who have done multiple projects with the city. Again, some of the projects lately have had much higher than anticipated costs due to a shortage of contractors in the North Coast area. These are skilled engineering projects and we came in much higher than we expected. We wish we had had more competitive bids, but we didn't. We only have one. So we're looking at, there is funding available. We're not happy about having to spend that extra funding. And from talks with the contractor this evening, he's reduced it 60,000. I mean, it's still over 400,000 over what our initial estimates were. He's going to drop it down 60,000 and try to work with us as best they can and everything to reduce costs. We'll be monitoring and trying to keep any change orders down to a minimum. But if we go out to bid, we can deny this bid and just go back to the drawing board. Again, like one of our last bids, we're not guaranteed if we go to bid for springtime that we'll have more contractors and that the costs won't be higher. And that's the problem. So looking at it now, yes, it's higher in cost. We could break out the sewer portion, which was an add, an add alt, but it, if we go back afterwards and try to dig that up again after doing the water lines and do it as a separate project, it'll cost over 800,000. That's why it makes sense financially to do them all at once. But again, we just have much higher than expected costs for this project.
I'm not happy that it's over budget, but I also know that cost of materials and labor just continue to go up and delaying it could potentially cost us even more.
Yeah. And keeping track with the State Budget Office on public works projects, it's been significant. Each year, it's going up anywhere between 15 to 20%. If we add that into it, we may come in a little lower, but we'll lose a whole construction season. And it does, it's not a guarantee that we'll come in lower. We may come in at the same price again. And we don't know what kind of pool of people we'll get. Argonaut Constructors has done quite a bit of work with the city and likes doing work with the city and we've been very happy with their quality. They're a good contractor. So like I said, we're going to keep very tight track on this and stuff in terms of change orders. It is a very complex project. And we anticipate it maybe a little bit higher than expected costs. We talked about this in our committee meeting. We didn't expect them this high.
Councilmember Stransky?
I think this is a really good thing to do it and to only have to tear it up one time is a really good item, I think. And I know that it costs more than what we had expected, but like, if we wait until next year to do it, it's going to be higher than this. And I, everybody knows that. And it's, it's a thing that needs to be done. And the steelwater pipe has just been a pain in everybody's ear and I just think that it's time to get it done, personally.
Any other comments?
I'm really struggling with this one. I am definitely in support of this project and have been from the beginning. I am grateful to staff for having the foresight to combine the water and sewer project together as one to minimize the disruption to the community, to save money. However, I'm, I'm really bothered by the price tag, by the overage, by the fact that there's no competition. It even bothers me that they've dropped the price by 60,000. If they can drop it by 60,000, why can't they drop it by 200,000? So I, as much as I hate to say this, I really feel like if it were just me making the decision, I probably would put it back out to bid and hope for better in the winter when people are hungry and there's more competition between bidders. I'm sure that wouldn't be a popular opinion out in the community because we all wanted this done yesterday and it is such an important project. But I also feel like we're talking about $1.7 million and I want to make sure that we got the best price for our taxpayers. And right now, I don't know that we did. And I, I'm struggling.
The risk would be if it came in more.
But if there are more people trying for it and we reject this and they know, oh, the city didn't want to do the project for 1.7, maybe there's more incentive for them to look more prostrate their bid and come up with something that's more profitable.
And we don't know if we'll get more people. It's totally up in the air. Going into it in the winter season, doesn't seem to matter a lot. A lot of the engineering contractors, they're not lining up work for the whole year. Right now, Argonaut was able to do it because they finished up all their projects and have available crews. It's sort of hit and miss. It's not a project we want to go into during a rainy season or even an early spring just because of the difficulties and stuff in open trenches, open roads. It is something that we have to do during a summer or fall project. If we did put it off, it would be into next summer that we would get into it and everything. So we would have to delay it a year. I agree. The costs are much higher than we expected. It was shocking. I'm just worried about going into it next year if we have the same situation. We had two contractors, one of them who's done work with the city before, who came as far as from Nevada to bid on it, but in the end, he didn't bid on it because I believe he got another project. This is the problem. The A contractors, the engineering contractors, are really scarce right now in the, in the North Coast and they're working on huge projects all the way north of here and into Lake County. And we're not getting bids from some of the bigger ones, Granite, Gelati, anyone that's like that, because they are so big. So we're going for some of the second-tier contractors and even they're pushed. I don't, I cannot guarantee, we can't predict and stuff. I just know the prices will be higher. I don't know if we'll get any better. That's the only problem. And I agree with you.
Go ahead.
The one thing that I have noticed also is that Mear and Van Lane are in this and it's really tied in there and it's going to take extra work to do those two lanes. And when you start really looking at it, it's not a bargain, but it's not that far out. Thank you.
Yeah, it's not an easy project. Those are difficult areas in this job. Technically, it will be the most difficult we take on this year, yes, in projects.
So when you said the contractor has offered to reduce the bid by 60,000, does that make the new amount 1,649?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Is it time to make a motion or not?
I think we have another question still.
You know what? I, I agree with Greta that I have those concerns, but at the same time, I think if we push it out a year, I have yet to see a project that comes in cheaper a year out. It, whether, the whole time I've been doing this with the city and the whole time when I was on the school board, whenever a project came back a year later, it never came back cheaper. I honestly, I kind of hate when our engineers tell us it's supposed to be X and they're so way off. And, and that's, if I have some ire, sometimes it's with that. I mean, they, they should know the market forces out there and at least be able to come in and say, we predict it's going to be this, so the sticker shock doesn't hit us. But I, and again, I agree with Larry that it's a good project. I hate paying this much for it, but I don't think it's going to get any cheaper.
Inflation in the workforce has been so unpredictable.
Yeah.
Okay. She would like to make a motion?
Well, we have a public
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll open it up to the public. Do you have a member of the public?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you please step up to the podium for us?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matthew.
Melanie.
And I got a question about the project itself. Is it something that could be scalable? Is it something that all has to be done all at once? This is a big project. It's reaching our limit, our budget. Could it be cut in half or, not necessarily half, but you know, 60/40 or something, it could be split up over a couple of years so that even though the price won't go down, at least we won't be able to have to eat that all at once?
No, that's a really big question and that's what, that's what Walter Colan was alluding to, that we did have that discussion and we have been thinking about that. And maybe you could elaborate on that a little.
And part of it, I wish we could break it up, but the way the piping, the water lines are running, it makes sense to take care of these all at once and not do it piecemeal. This is an interconnected areas and are problem areas, they're the worst ones. There's a certain savings and mobilization with the contractor to do it at a certain scale. When we start lowering it, their prices are naturally just going to go up and it might even be even more expensive. Yes, we'd be biting off a smaller amount right now. In the end, we'd be paying a lot more. There'd be a premium with that. Yeah.
Thank you. That addresses my concern. Yes.
And Walter, complete streets that we've tried to do has been to try and tackle a lot of our projects at once so we're not busting up our payment.
Yeah. 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 Yes. And some of these are critical. One of the sections is in an area over the bridge right near us here and everything where the pipe is leaking very badly. These are all in desperate need. So they've all been identified as high priority and that's why this project was put together the way it was for the highest priority ones and the last of the steel pipes that are in such bad condition that are contributing to the poor water quality at times.
Is that, out of curiosity, there's been a few spots where there's been like a small sinkhole in the road. Are these
Some of those might be. Because of that, we've done a lot of repairs.
I noticed that some of them are on those
Yes. And there's been a lot of work that the crews have done to temporarily keep these pipes in, in good condition, in working condition. Some of them have multiple bands and repair clamps on them to keep them functioning right now. So they're past, well past their lifespan. Yes.
Anyone else from the public? All right. Hearing none, I'll bring it back up here.
So, yeah. I agree with the comments that have been made that I don't think it would be any cheaper if we waited a year. In fact, it, you know, might not be even, that's good. But, and it's a necessary project. So anyway, I, I move the resolution awarding contract to Argonaut Construction with the, so the wording in the Item 9D, but changing the amount not to exceed 1,649,505, and authorize City Manager to execute contact, et cetera.
I'll second. Oh, Larry.
John.
Larry, Larry can second.
All right. Strong made the motion. Stransky seconded the motion and I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Connie?
No.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez? Yes. Motion carries four, one. And Item 9E, Introduction of Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Budget with an Explanation of Its Mythology and Distribution of Major K Funds.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. So what I've got before you right now from just your review is the, is looking at the budget in its entirety. Within that, I have made a few notes and everything like that, exactly what the changes are within this particular style of budget. So one of the biggest changes, the model of using expenses, using the reimbursement model instead of what we have been doing in the past, where we kind of dissect the costs associated with it. So the plan is to kind of show our work and show the reimbursements, the actual cost of what's actually happening within each individual department so that we can kind of see it for what it truly is, as opposed to peppering reimbursement
of see it for what it truly is as opposed to peppering reimbursements across each of the departments so that it might allude to the notion of, you know, a lower cost when it actually isn't. So this way, we actually see the amounts of what everything actually costs. Another thing is to show the CIP in a separate funds in order to be able to, to express the costs and how they are being funded. And also to give or allow projects to be pre-funded in various years so that they can kind of carry over dollars over dollars from years prior in order to be able to cover the cost of an actual project that may be happening within the five years. So the idea is to save for the future in order to be able to cover the costs of those funds or for those projects. So the notion behind it, and I have that in the basis of budgeting to kind of spell it out within this document, is the idea behind it is that reimbursements, which is transfers, transfers are an action where money is being given for sometimes specific reasons, but it's a, it's a movement of funds for that reason. Whereas a reimbursement is a direct reimbursement of cost itself. And so cost allocation methodology kind of is implied in that. And, and we try and show our work in terms of like how we come about that and how our costs are being dispersed to every different department. So with that, most of the items have been put in place. The last remaining pieces, there are a couple of small changes that happened after the fact, after this budget was made. A 911 recorder went down over at the, at police department. So we're going to take up about $8,000. This is like small stuff that, you know, comes in after the fact. At one point in time, a senior city planner was removed from the budget mostly because we didn't think we were going to be able to fill it. And then we are going to be putting that back in. And the solar ray project that wasn't included in the CIP, it's going to be using, it's going to be using wastewater funds in which wastewater has about 7.8 million in its fund balance. So it will be able to cover that cost. So those are the big items that have come up since. But aside from that, that's what we have and that's where we're at. Do you have any questions?
Yes. I just wanted to say thank you. I feel like you've really heard the comments that council has made and also that the finance committee has made. I can tell that there have been some adjustments and corrections, notations added that help clarify. So I really do appreciate that. I do have one question on the page just after the basis of budgeting and accounting. You have a list of FTE employees per department?
Yes.
And you show zero elected officials. I'm wondering if you know something I don't know.
Usually elected officials are not part of that. It's just the amount of, because elected officials are kind of separated amongst, separated away from that. But if you want, I can include that in.
Well, even though, I mean, I just find it confusing since the expense of council is included in the budget. It seems odd not to show them as.
I can put that in.
Okay. Thank you.
You want us listed under employees?
Well, we are technically.
Well, then what I want to raise. That's a whole other.
Oh, yeah. There is one other subject is some of the, some of the revenues are, are contingent upon the master fee schedule and the amounts that would be associated with it. It's a small amount, but it's there. And so that's something that we have to account for. We may have to adjust if the master fee schedule is not approved. But we cannot make that adjustment at a later date in a budget amendment.
All right. Is there anybody from the public that would like to ask a question or make a comment? We've got a quiet group now. Yeah.
I guess I'm not finding, because you talked about CIP projects, but I know that the radio system over at the police department probably hasn't been upgraded since I retired. And I know I've been hearing that the sheriff's department's going maybe in another direction with the, with the port writing system. So are we looking at that and?
We are looking at that, but that's something that we have to have a little bit more information and have it be a little more tangible. And we will, we will need to go to measure K in order to be, the measure K committee, in order to be able to brief them on purchasing a, a new, what is it, REMS system?
That's one option that we would prefer.
Yeah. And then also the, the radio systems. So we, we are, we're wanting to look at that later on in order to be able to cover. So we want to have a more thorough answer for when we're approaching.
If I may, interim chief, Chris Dewey has identified some shortcomings. He also identified some funding opportunities that are being held within Sacramento that we can tag on to for upgrades.
Well, I can tell you that Sacramento doesn't pay for radios usually. They usually pay for 911 to public.
Well, we're looking at that whole suite of radios, dispatch center, upgrading the hardware, software. Like I said, Chris Dewey has identified some opportunities. We're kind of in a holding pattern. Chris has his hands full with staffing right now and trying to just deliver law enforcement, public safety to the community. We have, he's made notes to myself and to Manny. We have tracked that. We have identified that. What we're trying to do is we like to bring in a full-time chief and let them do the assessment of what resources we need, how do we need to upgrade the services and go from there. So like Manny said, that it's a work in progress and probably be opportunities in the near future where we're going to identify budget amendments for the council's consideration based off recommendations that either Chris said in motion and the subsequent full-time chief will look at and make recommendations to endorse.
Well, I guess the concern I have is if the radios go down, just in my talks in the county, that radio system wise, that we, we may be in a crunch.
Okay.
And I guess that's the only, if I have to think of something that keeps me awake at night, is nothing else, having a stopgap plan for radios if it goes down because.
What we can do in that case, we can look at a stopgap, see what initial prices are for a full suite of options from stopgap to a more permanent solution. We can look at the numbers, put a proposal together and present it to the council. Either we may get it before you, before the 14th. Our intent is to present this hearing comments tonight with the intent that the council would approve it on the 14th, or we just put a placeholder in the budget and we do our due diligence and present new would have planned as a separate amendment.
Because I think that REMS is something that I think you have to look at and maybe is a little out there, but.
It's.
Radios.
So would the council like there to be a dollar amount placeholder? Or would you like city manager to come before us later with a budget amendment? What's your preference?
You know, I, I think I would like a placeholder amount that maybe comes back as part of the budget so that it's there even though we may have to revisit it so that, again, radios are crucial. And I think that we kind of lent along hoping that somebody or something was going to fix the problem.
What kind of dollar amount would we be thinking about, Jerry?
Honestly, without going out and talking to vendors, I have not played around in that pool for a little bit, so.
Initial estimates were around 300,000.
300,000?
You know, I think that it's something that.
That would be a pretty big placeholder that would have impacted our budget.
Well, I think if nothing else, even having some money there for a consultant to come in, because normally what happens with, with those sort of things is that you would have a consultant prepare an RFP for some sort of radio program. Then you'd go out and look at, you know, I guess I, if we had some money there and we had to draw on it to do some sort of patchwork, then we have the money in the budget. That's one of my only concerns. You know, the, when the, when the whole fire thing happened and we at least could communicate locally with our own radio system. So I would be happy with a placeholder bound for some sort of consultant if nothing else is part of the budget process. That's just my take.
Are there any thoughts or objections? Looked like city manager had something to say.
Yeah, I, maybe it's just refining what Jerry has alluded to or explained. Knowing that, yes, and Manny's right, I've heard large numbers being tossed around internally like that. Why don't, basically the instruction is to the city manager to research either a consultant to do their homework to look at what options are out there and to look at what systems we can implement. So right now, I don't want to be throwing.
I have to budget, but at the same time, I think that if we don't have it there, I think that most chiefs are going to look at consultants that come in and help them.
Yeah. I guess what I, I guess how I want to sum it up is that it sounds like this is a concern with the council. Let us do the homework to see what options are available and what's the funding that's going to be necessary and if there's any outside assistance we can pursue. And then we can bring a package back to you without modifying the budget and we can always get the way it's configured now and we can come back to you and put a plan and you can approve that plan and then we can move forward.
Would you be okay with a, basically a budget amendment later?
Yeah.
Okay. Any objections? Hearing done. This was just for us, an introduction this evening. Directions been given.
Just briefly, the intent here, I know this is really the first budget in the last couple of years that we're, we have piped in measure K. As the council, understanding how we are utilizing measure K, staff feels that we're confident we're following the guidelines that were established by that ballot measure and we have presented items to the committee. I, you know, this is a big, big change for us in our budgeting exercises and I want to make sure that the council understands what we accomplished and what we're looking to accomplish.
I think as a finance committee, councilmember Connie and I have really had the opportunity to think about it and think about it and ask lots of questions. I think this is more focused towards maybe the others that didn't have the benefit of, of coming, coming around to, to the idea and the concept. At first I didn't like it.
Both the finance, both the finance committee members and other council members, when I spoke to them, when I speak to you, you know, one of the reoccurring themes is the public asks, how are, how are we tracking? How are we utilizing measure K? Is it going to the intended purposes? And here it is. And so I just want to make sure that when you're asked those questions, you are confident you have that information.
That's why we wanted our finance director to put in, as councilmember Connie said, so many footnotes and graphs so that it, there was, we could clearly track. We spent these dollars, this is what we spent it on, it came from here. That, that was the importance of tying it all together and assigning the finance department so much extra work.
And in the measure K section for the budget notes in the front, there's a, there's a budget narrative there that actually spells out the use of all the funds.
And that's what we would ask to keep seeing year after year as we move forward so that we're holding ourselves accountable and the public, it's, it's easy. They don't even have to work hard to figure out the answer. It's there in black and white.
Yeah, I have one question about that and I, I can't draw, I can't get my agenda packet up on my computer. So I don't have it in front of me right now. But one of the items was a staff position. And I was wondering about whether that is.
So there was a construction inspector position that was presented to measure K as a part of.
Right.
Asked to add into our budget.
And I guess, so my question is, does that, once you have a staff position, it's usually ongoing? You aren't doing it only for the, the duration of the measure K?
Except for in this instance. So in, in this instance, this position was presented to the measure K oversight committee as someone who could help shepherd through the myriad number of projects that are, the city is looking at over the next five to seven years. And so in order to take pressure off of current staff, we would hire a construction inspector to get these over the finish line. And then once we're over that, we no longer need that position. So before measure K even sunsets, this position would sunset.
That's what my question was.
And one other item regarding that position, a good portion of that funding is going to be coming from grant funded projects too. So grant administration costs are going to be funneled to support that position to stretch it. But the intent is, is right now it's going to be configured that it's a short-term need. Like Walter said, you know, we have a couple of big projects, the, the water main project you, the council does eventually approve, is going to take a lot of lifting. And we try to reduce our reliance on consultants and staff has identified of all the opportunities that we can utilize measure K for, for staffing, this will bring rewards and reinvestment on that.
That answered my question because I, I think in general, it would be the intention not to.
That's correct.
To make a commitment.
That is correct. There was, there was quite a bit of conversation at the committee level with the citizens that were, you know, private citizens that were part of the group and as well as the two council members that are on it, we, there's consensus.
Can I add something? I just wanted to say that in general, the measure K oversight committee and the mayor and I have been very conservative about opening the purse, as it were, for the measure K monies. And I, I believe it's caused a bit of frustration to our city manager and to some staff who, you know, the money has been coming in and it's accruing and the intent was to spend it and to offer value to the community. But there was a real strong agreement at the measure K committee to make sure that all of our financial ducks were in order, that our audits were done, that we had a very clear picture of where we stood with the city's finances before we started spending that measure K money. So we're right on the cusp of that with all but the last audit done and that expected to be done, you know, before the end of this year. Measure K will meet again, the committee in September. And then at that point, you start to see we are really folding in the use of the measure K funds into the budget so that the community will see the direct results of the sales tax that they've been paying.
I just wanted to thank the measure K committee and you for, and the finance committee for dogging this like you did because I appreciate that. I think that we made a promise to the community. We first got, got the tax passed, we got, but we didn't want to spend it till we knew that our audits were done and, and we, before we even started looking at this money, we made sure that our measure K committee was impaneled. And then we looked at this and I've supported the holdoff on spending the money until we were ready. And I think now we're, we're going to start showing some, some expenditures with some projects out there. And I'm comfortable at this point. I wasn't earlier. And so I, again, I support the fact that you were reluctant to spend the money. I was in the same boat.
And I think, I do, I do think that we have to also thank our city manager and our finance director for, for recognizing the reticence on the part of the measure K committee and for being patient with us and helping us get to the point where we were ready to start spending the money. So acknowledge both of you having restraint and, and giving the committee the room to make sense of everything.
I agree. We knew what the council's wishes were as a whole and we knew what the community wanted. We were really all as a group trying to collectively respect that. Okay. Moving on to department monthly reports presented at the second meeting of each month, which is now. Kathy, do you want to add anything for airport?
I just wanted to let you know.
For highlights?
Still, I'm sorry.
Or, or highlights?
I'm still planning to reschedule our tour once the weather cools down a bit because it gets rather toasty up there. So that is not, been taken off the radar, radar, excuse me. So we'll get that going again.
I had to throw that out there.
Thanks.
I know.
Appreciate that. Boo is right. Speaking of that, I have told a couple of you, but I did want to announce that we'd like to thank the FAA because we did take out a grant some years back for the AWAS system and did a design on it. And with the help of our consultants, we went, they went to bat for us and FAA has granted us the relief of those funds. We do not have to pay them back and we are not getting the AWAS system. So that was a big, because that was $49,000 that we didn't have budgeted. So we were very thankful that they were forgiving that for us.
All right. But do you have any questions?
Thank you. No, just a thank you. All right. Community development.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening. Just a few updates to the report there. We are essentially complete with the designs for the rail trail project and are ready to move on to the construction portion of the project. We had attempted to get on the agenda of the California Transportation Commission at their. their August meeting to seek allocation of those funds. Unfortunately, we were not able to get on that agenda and will be seeking the funding at the October meeting. So, we're not going to quite be able to get a jump on, on construction as early this year as we had hoped, but needless to say that, that project moves forward. And so absolutely anxious and appreciate the support of the construction manager position because we anticipate that position playing a key role in the construction management of that rail trail project. And to the city manager's point, there, there is funding and available in there to support that position's effort towards that individual project there. I guess the glimmer of good news with the delay, and again, it was due to the fact that although we have lined up CDFW, the Water Board, Army Corps, PG&E, Caltrans, the Great Redwood Trail Agency, the Skunk Train, we had one more crossing that needed to be approved by the CPUC and, and that's what ultimately led to us not being able to get on the agenda for them. So, but we will, we will move forward. There is also the mitigation lands component that goes along with this project, which is also being funded by the State Coastal Conservancy and that design work is wrapping up in October. So, it looks like there's going to be an opportunity to merge the two construction projects, both the trail itself and the mitigation work and we can put that out for bid together and there may be some cost savings on that. So, that, that might be a, a glimmer of good news on, on that delay front. I want to give another plug for our housing rehab program. Again, the city was successful in obtaining state funds to support giving out no interest loans to owner-occupied housing within the city of Willets. So, you can receive up to $50,000 to support improvements to your home that may be falling into disrepair. So, you know, a common example that's coming in with the, the current applications is like a new roof. So, we are accepting applications through August 5th. We encourage the public to contact the Community Development Department, ask for our co-compliance officer, Phil Davidson, and we would look forward to introducing you to that program and walking you through the, the application process. So, certainly looking for, for more applicants on that front. We are releasing the EIR for the land use element tomorrow, so there'll be a notice of availability going out to stakeholders and others that have signed up for notifications on the, on that project. The public draft of the land use element has been out for a few weeks and is available on the project website, willetslanduseupdate.com. We anticipate bringing that matter forward for public discussion with the council at the, at the second meeting in August. It'll be at, at least two meetings with a follow-up discussion at the September 11th meeting. So, that project is also moving forward. Just to respond to some of the comments that were made during public comment some hours ago, we are, staff is bringing forward the, as a discussion item only, so this will not be presented to council at your next meeting, is that August 14th maybe, first meeting, regularly scheduled meeting in August. It will be not being, being brought forward to you as a yes, no, but rather as a discussion item only. And it does, the discussion will be about the current application that we have from one of the owners that lives on Oak Street that abuts to the alley there. We heard from Ms. Grooms, who is also one of the owners there. So, we anticipate sending out notification to those property owners that abut the alley next week to notify them of the discussion item that'll be scheduled for the August 14th meeting.
I do have a follow-up question.
Yes, please.
If an incomplete application was submitted, why would the city be going through with the process of notifying neighbors and bringing it for an informational piece? That part I was a little confused and concerned about because I, is this going to be a policy going forward? Has this been a policy of the past? Why are we, or are we doing something different this time?
Yes, I appreciate that question. It's a good question. I'll, I'll see if I can clarify that. So, the big piece of why that application is incomplete, because that is a, very much a correct statement, is our process calls for a full-on survey of the alley to be requested for abandonment to be provided prior, to, to, as part of the application process. As the director, I suppose I'm using my discretion as, and, and understanding, you know, that the applicant, that we may be leading the applicant towards an expensive no. So, this is an opportunity to bring it forward for discussion. I think there's some mixed feelings amongst the neighbors that abut the alley. Ms. Grooms has done a good job of notifying and talking to some of the neighbors. The applicant, Nicolas Casa Grande, has also done the same. So, I, I think the logic is, let's, let's bring the parties together, have them have an opportunity to address the council, share their perspective on the matter. And if it's a situation where, due to the fact that, again, we'll, we'll see what, what happens, I'm, I'm not saying this is a statement, but it appears that there, there may be a lack of support from the neighbors to support the abandonment of the alley. And so I think if we hear that and, again, it's not up for a yes, no answer, but if, it may be that the, the applicant hears that and chooses not to move forward with the application at that point. And what we've done is we've avoided the expensive cost of doing the survey work and some of the other matters. What we do have is, you know, we have, we have letters from the utilities clearing it, we have, you know, I, I need to check back with the file to see if we have letters from, from all the, the neighbors or not. I know there's at least some of them in there, but I, you know, so there's a little bit of, of stuff we need to check on, but the majority of the information is there. I think we have the story at hand and can present the, the picture to the council so they have a good-
I guess the only part that, that I don't, I'm not in favor of is the fact that we took the time to create a policy, but now there has been some discretion that's been applied, even though we took the time to create a policy so that we didn't have this community drama, so to speak. That's why we had the policy in place to anticipate these types of problems and yet here we are dealing with community drama when it should just be cut and dry. This is the policy.
Yes, I under, understand that comment and perspective. If, if it, the, if the applicant, after that informational discussion, wants to move forward with the application, we will not come back to the council with any type of formal decision until they have crossed their Ts and dotted their Is and have a fully complete application.
I think what I'm hearing from you is regardless of what the policy says, I, I can respect this, I disagree, but you're saying that you're going to use your discretion and bring it before us, even though the policy has, it's a policy.
Yeah, but, and by policy, you're, you're calling out the application procedures. And, and I think even if, even if we required, you know, the, the survey to come forward, I, I think the situation with some of the neighbors maybe being for it and some being opposed of it, it's not going to eliminate that discussion.
Look, if I could just maybe help clarify, at the informational presentation, council is asked, what is you, you know, what is your thoughts? And the council can say, you know, it's not in the best interest of this body, it's not in the best interest of the community, not in the best interest of the neighborhood. The applicant can say, "Thank you very much, appreciate your comments." And literally, within, you know, six months, can come back with a full-blown completed application or a survey. He has every right, due process, to seek this request before you.
And if he exercised, if he exercised that right, would the city incur any fees to bring it before council at that time?
The, there's an-
No, the applicant would, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, how is it in our best interest to circumvent a process of procedure that we put in place? I'm still not seeing the point other than honestly trying to appease somebody with making an exception, but then why did we put a policy and procedure in place if we're just going to make an exception on the very first case? That just doesn't make sense to me, that's all I'm saying.
Well, I guess, we're giving the, an applicant an opportunity to be heard informally. If he recognizes that it's an uphill battle, I'm not going to waste my time and money and effort. If he feels he's strongly committed to what his request is and he feels justified, then he still can pursue. It's at his expense and we'll process it as a full-blown application. And that could be, happen with any land use application, a variance, land, uh, land use map amendment, a rezone, a change of use. We give that opportunity to any applicant. So, if you recall, it was about a year and a half ago with the log yard application.
Right.
We presented that to the council and said, "Council, this is an application that is in the works. Is there anything here that you think is concerning? Is there any guidance you can give back to the applicant to strengthen their request as it comes back to you as a formal matter?"
Question, when we talk, say survey, are we talking about a legal survey of the property or a survey of the community in that area?
For, for the, for the benefit of the application procedures, we're talking about this, a survey completed by a licensed survey of the area subject to the request of abandonment, so the alley in this case.
Because the way I see it, the way, at least I interpreted the policy before was, any, we all agreed, let's say we're all the folks in the alley and we all said, "We, we're all good with this and we bring our project before the city and we do our survey and basically it could be a done deal." But if Greta says, "I don't like it," and it says, "I don't like it, but the rest of us want it," it's probably going to be doomed in its eventuality, but if the applicant wants to continue, what you're saying is, you got to process their request, even though it looks like, based on our policy, it's probably not going to pass because we've got some folks that aren't for it, but they've got every right to bring it before us. Is that what you guys are saying?
Correct.
Yes.
And I'll, no, go ahead.
I'll get to in just one second. Go ahead.
I was also remembering that, that informal presentation about the log yard and that I think that that is a legitimate and helpful thing for us to do if there's a fairly major potential controversy or land use decision before an applicant has gone, you know, down the road with a lot of expense to get some kind of initial heads up, you know, "This is a problem or we'd love you to go in this direction and not that direction." So, I, I don't think it's an abuse of your discretion to say that we might want to bring this as an information item without a yes, no vote. It's just sort of a heads up and the applicant can go ahead or not with their application, but, you know, I, I think that's appropriate.
Correct me if I'm wrong, this came to council before. So, this, from my perspective, this has created a lot of agitated feeling amongst the neighbors there and therefore it has created a lot of agitated feeling amongst council members because we hear about it from the neighbors. And so, I sort of feel like, although I understand the intent of giving the applicant an opportunity to hear that you may be headed towards an expensive no, in my mind, the applicant has received that information multiple times and is still going forward. And so, in that case, we've all been subjected to something that maybe we shouldn't have been subjected to because the original application said you have to complete a full application before we do this.
Thank you.
And so, I'm, I'm sort of with Suprina on this that, you know, it would have been nice to not be here almost a year later and still have nothing resolved and have a lot of agitation put on us, which frankly, we didn't ask for.
We talked about the yard one time informational. We have talked about this lot issue multiple times and as a result of talking about lots in our community at several meetings, we came up with a policy and procedure so we didn't have to keep revisiting things that were not, not, it needed to be very procedural. I'm just, I'm expressing that I'm not happy with the fact that it's coming back before council. It is what it is, but I'm unhappy about it.
Could I make a comment? One possible benefit of airing this out as informational item is that it helps to establish a policy about what are important considerations. For example, if, if you have five neighbors who abut an alley and only one of them wants to do this, or, or any number less than five are in agreement, what's the council's position? If I would think that, there's no case where the city is going to piecemeal abandon portions of an alley. It's got to be the whole alley or none of the alley. And it seems to me that if this is being done by a homeowner application, the city council deciding to abandon the street, there really needs to be unanimous consent among those property owners. And if we had a, if you heard this meeting and you learned that there were differing opinions and the neighborhood was not in agreement, that would help to establish policy that going forward, we're only going to grant them applications if all the neighbors are in agreement.
Which we created a policy. We did just that.
You look like you're having a deja vu. I feel like you said that exact same thing to us last time we talked.
But that is why we created the policy, because of exactly what you just said.
But our, our policy does not say that. It does not say, this is probably a bunch of crap, that there has to be unanimous consent.
That there has to be unanimous consent amongst the neighbors. You have the policy, what does the policy say about the, the consent of the neighbors? Does it say majority, unanimous, nine out of 10? What is the exact language?
I don't have it right in front of me, but it requires the applicant who is requesting the abandonment to notify all applicable neighbors that enjoy access to or benefit from, from the alley. It doesn't, so it's just a notification process. And then as part of the application submission, they need to provide evidence of such notification.
And did we receive evidence that they have noticed the neighbors?
I need to double-check to make sure they're all in there and I will, I will do that.
Because we just turned it-
We will also be, correct, right. So, we'll, we'll, we'll verify that, but again, before any formal decision could be taken from the council, we would ensure that every, everything was, was there. There is, if I talk to different individuals, I get different stories at this point. There's been quite a bit of staff time taken up on this matter, so it is, as, as council has heard too. And so the thought is to just, again, bring this forward as a discussion item, let it see the light of day. I would also add that-
I think I got that point.
Yeah.
Thank you. It sounds like the matter's going to come before us yet again and we'll have a conversation about it.
It also sounds like if we don't have a clear policy in place, as Mr. Lance has indicated, we should have one so that any other member of the community who wants to have an alleyway abandoned knows if they have to have, you know, unanimous agreement amongst their neighbors or not. If we don't have that written down somewhere, we better figure it out and get it written down.
We had one, so I don't understand why it's not here anymore.
Well, we, we should, we should fix that problem.
We have an ordinance, it has a defined policy. Basically, it is like any land use application that has the planning commission, ultimately does the board of, excuse me, the planning, the city council will render a decision on. It is not, you, there may be 30 neighbors against it, but it is, in the spirit of adopted plans, ordinances, your goals, your objectives, you have a discretion to hear the request as full merit and then render a decision. All we're asking for is, this is, this is a new application to give the opportunity for both staff and the applicant to work out the process. It's new, it's a new ordinance. We can tell the applicant, "No, finalize the application, do a complete map and a survey to support their application and come forward again."
Okay, so we'll hear the matter and regardless of what we decide, we may potentially hear the matter again. So, we'll hear the matter. All right.
This, the last thing again, going back- This, the last thing, again, going back to the comments we heard earlier, so with the Starbucks situation, I did receive an updated landscaping plan showing the trees in question to remain. That'll become an official approval element of the site plan review, and just to answer the earlier question that came up, that's how we, um, you know, capture that assurance that the trees will remain, is through an approved landscaping plan.
Thank you.
I think Robin had a question about that.
You did, if you wanna step up there. My apologies for forgetting.
Hi, I'm Robin Leeler, and this is all new to me, but I'm finding that, because you waited so long to call on me, what I was going to say has probably been said, which is, this is, seems to be a new policy, it's one of the first tests of the policy, and maybe it doesn't have a condition of, a clear condition of surveying the people adjoining the land that is being, uh, proposed to be used in a certain way. And, so I kinda see two things now that you've talked about it more, is maybe that policy has to include, you know, the neighbor's input.
The policy does include that.
Okay, so then, you may be saying that it can be rejected because it was incomplete, and, and if it does not have all the neighbor's input, it could be rejected on that basis and not come back to you. Is that correct?
That is the point.
Okay, that's, that's really all I wanted to clarify, thanks.
Thank you. Yes.
I didn't wanna beat that horse here, but, um, I, it seems like the, what we adopted is more procedure than it is a policy. It doesn't say, if we don't have unanimous consent from all the adjoining property owners, we will turn it down. It doesn't say that, and I think that's, actually, it shouldn't, because it is a discretionary decision.
Nobody actually can recall what it says.
I, yeah, I-
So, let's, I think at this point, let's just wait until the applicant comes before us. I would like to have a copy of that policy to read, because, uh, my constituents are asking very pointed questions about what the policy is, and I'm gonna follow policy and procedure, and it's, it's frustrating when we can't follow policy.
I would like to finish my sentence.
Go ahead, sorry.
That is, the abandonment of an alley, hypothetical, not this alley, but some, you know, it could be in the city's best interests, even if it's brought forward by a private party, and even though one or two, or whatever, number of neighbors might object, if we might, we might, as the city council, go, "Well, you know, just as we approve, um, all sorts of other planning decisions, not everybody's gonna be happy with every single decision, and we're weighing that," so it, maybe we wanna have some better criteria, or have criteria in that policy, but it, I just, I just don't wanna, yeah, that's all I wanna say. Thank you.
I just, one last thing, because I don't wanna beat the dead horse. Dusty, do you think you could email that policy out before-
I think that's a good idea.
Because I've gotten some questions too, and-
Okay.
And now, I'm, my memory is such that I would like to, uh, go over and do that again.
Yeah, and, uh, I'll, um, there's a little bit of policy language, but the meat of it is the application itself, and, um, we'll provide that to council.
Thank you. Sorry to put you in the hot seat tonight.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate the discussion, and it's, it's completely fair criticism, and, um, I, I, but I thi, I think it'll be, um, again, we're trying it out for the first time, and, um, well, it, it might lead to some tweaks of the policy even, so-
Our feet are being-
Right, it'll be a specific alley, but it might become a broader policy discussion too, so, thank you.
Watching the sausage get eaten.
Finance, anything?
It's just not an audit, we're audit.
Dusty, it could be audits. And we're expecting to have a completed audit late August?
Late August.
Late August, though.
I'm trying to roll along with that.
Okay.
Part of the, um, fun of this is that we, there are two unique years that are coming up. One is the last year that we have an ACS be involved in it, and the other one, we have to merge ACS with Springbrook. So, it's kind of, uh, we've kinda got one foot in each system at the moment, so, they both have their own challenges. One, I have to roll fund balances from the ACS system over to Springbrook, and then, we have to reconcile what we put into ACS and make sure that it lands in Springbrook, so-
All right.
It's getting meticulous, so.
We're looking forward to the full rollout.
Yeah.
All right, police department, Chief Dewey, anything? No? All right, services and facilities, anything additional?
Nothing additional, enough of the questions, all.
Counsel?
Nope. Just, I just wanted to say, I continue to get feedback from the community, how pleased they are with, um, how our services and facilities department is running. Town looks great, um, it really showed its pride during Frontier Days, um, so thank you to your crews, for doing a great job.
Thank you, and the crews have been working really hard with the weather, everyone's been really doing well, yes, thank you for that.
I didn't, I just thought of something. I did have a community member come to me today, and we were talking about weed abatement and overgrowth, and the city has some, uh, property up by a binten vendor that is, the grass is pretty tall.
We're working on it.
You've got it in the plan to get that taken care of?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you though.
Thank you. All right, utilities, anything there? Nothing for utilities.
Oh, sorry, nothing else, yeah.
All right.
Can I just point out to the public who may not have, uh, be looking at these reports, um, reservoir capacity at Morrison Centennial, 93% as of July 19th.
That's rated good.
Yeah, rated very well.
All right, uh, council announcements, communications, and reports, I will start with Councilmember Connie Thompson. Okay, I'll start at this end, Vice Mayor.
Um, Larry and I went to the Water Waste Water Systems Committee meeting on July 18th. A lot of it was still waiting on things like our MOU with the railroad, uh, avenue water line, uh, steel water line, we dealt with that tonight. Um, I guess our wastewater treatment plant building, SHN, is still kinda working on the plans, I guess?
Yeah, we're close to going on the metal building, correct.
And then, we, reservoir modeling project draft, to come back to you guys, the staff, the review, and reservoir boards, I guess you guys are looking at that, and steel tank bid.
We're going out shortly for the site work for the steel water tank from Superior, correct.
And I guess you guys are working with EBA, is it? On the EPA lead line service line update?
Yes.
And, uh, then, Little Lake Mobile Home Park, I guess they wanna move ahead, and you're working with Amy Little from the state of California.
I think you were waiting for direction from the state of California with the next step we do.
Yes. And, basically, still kinda waiting from Pine Mountain, but doesn't look like they're moving ahead anytime soon.
No.
And, same thing, we heard that, uh, the 93% up at the reservoirs, but that they were releasing some water per our water rights that you're supposed to do, and that's, even with releasing some of that water-
For the salmon?
I don't know, why, why, it's part of the releases, it's not for the salmon, right? It's-
It's mandated releases that we're supposed to put into the creek, and we haven't been able to because of the water. Uh, we did not have enough. Right now, we, we're in good enough shape to keep up with those mandated levels, yes.
And even with that, we're still at 93. That's what I, I had a constituent ask me about that, and I said, "Even with releasing that, we're still at 93."
We're in good shape right now.
So, I thought that was it. So, I think that's all we had. Larry, did you, anything else?
Duplication everything you said.
I should've started with you, Larry.
Yeah, so, um, the only other thing is, I did attend the Riverwood Empire Fair Directors' Dinner on July 20th. Um, I guess, locally, they honored, um, Erline Schmidtbauer for livestock of the year, and the Blue Ribbon Award went to Lorraine Patton, and I don't know if you know her, but she's been really active in the community, in the art community, and my kids took classes from them, from her when, uh, they were little, so, and she's a fixture at the fair of the fine arts there, and it was kinda neat to see that lady honored, and, uh, and then, basically, Mendocino Coast Botanical Gardens was the business of the year. Agricultural list of the year was Martha Mara, and Example Service Award went to Katrina Kessin, you know, and she's just doing a great job down in Ukiah, and on behalf of us, because she, I totally forgot she had done the women's, uh, what was it?
Women in Business.
Women in Business, yeah, up here, and, and they brought that up, and so, she's, she's really active, and not just for the Ukiah area, but also helping us out up here, so I just, so I attended, kind of basically, as a city representative, so.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Shranzki?
Duplication, the water guy said first.
All right. Councilmember Shranzki?
Snowmaw Clean Power met, um, the second Thursday, and so, the first Thursday, because the first Thursday was, what, July, I think it was? Anyway, um, the, uh, the most interesting thing I wanted to bring to anyone that's interested in is, um, Snowmaw Clean Power has been very instrumental in developing what they're calling a geozone. It's basically developing new technology for accessing geothermal energy, and it, it promises to be in a very environmentally friendly, um, no-carbon emissions, uh, cheap source of, of electricity. Uh, it's technology that minimizes how much water is used, that accesses, um, geothermal resources that aren't otherwise, it's, uh, you know, haven't been accessed prior to this, and they have a town hall explaining this whole thing, the opportunities and what they're doing, tomorrow night from 6:00 to 8:00, uh, and it's held in person in Santa Rosa at their offices, but also is available online. I don't have the link on me right now, but if anyone is interested in attending that tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00, um, I, I think it's a really exciting development for the future of providing energy for our region especially. We're really lucky to have, to have this source, and that, that Snowmaw Clean Power's very, taking initiative on it. Um, I believe there is another, uh, changing subject here, the EDFC, Economic Development Financing Corporation. I think they have another meeting coming up, but I, my email has gotten very ball stuck recently, and I have to make sure I haven't missed a meeting, um, and I know that the, uh, Solid Waste Management won't meet until sometime in August, so, um, I will get those dates for the next time. So, that's, that's it for now.
Councilmember Connie?
Um, I attended the museum advisory board meeting, um, and learned that museum attendance is up. Uh, summer programs are running smoothly. Uh, they just recently hosted a book signing event for Dot Bovarney, who wrote a book on Redwood, uh, no, um, Leonard Lake Reservoir Area History. Um, they hosted an event at the museum just last weekend, which was well-attended. Uh, Karen Matson, the museum director, indicated that she has been regularly meeting with a group of county employees who are the working group moving the museum towards the transformation. She's pleased with how they're working together. Um, and the museum advisory board is still working to, uh, change its bylaws, that has met a little hiccup, um, but essentially, moving towards trying to, uh, allow for a smaller forum, since we seem to chronically be short, um, representatives from all the districts of the county. Uh, I also attended the finance committee meeting with the mayor, um, as I, it gave us another chance to review the budget and the CIP. We were able to give feedback to, um, our finance director regarding how transfers in were notated, so that we could make sure that, um, those of us who aren't, um, professional finance managers could actually understand, uh, how the transfers and expenses were, uh, working. So, as I stated earlier, I do really appreciate that, um, many of the comments that we made were reflected in what we saw tonight in the budget presentation, so, thank you.
That's it. All right. Yeah, I think we covered all of the city-style committees. Uh, the only other one was, uh, Mendocino Transit Authority. We haven't had a board meeting, uh, but we had our symposium, and we were the host this year, and, uh, probably the big takeaway with, is that the state is, uh, passing on a mandate for public transportation, that we also have hydrogen vehicles, which is something that is new, and that we honestly were kind of staying away from, um, but it looks like it's now part of a new mandate, so we're going to be exploring hydrogen. Yeah. All right. And I think that's all I have for, um, announcements and reports. Uh, good and welfare, anybody have anything? I think you said some good and welfare earlier.
Well, I just wanted to mention, I think, um, that I would like to know how the, um, cooling center, it is available from 9:00 to 6:00, even all seven days a week? I just wanted to make sure the public knows, um, if we're having one of these horrible heat waves, that they can, uh, take advantage of that, but how do they do that if it's not regular business hours?
It's open. It's open from 9:00 to 6:00.
9:00 to 6:00, even, even on the weekends, and-
We've been having it open.
Unless we have a rental.
Yes, unless we have a rental.
Unless there's a rental. Okay, so, if, you know, if anyone out there hasn't been aware of that, if you're stuck in a really horribly hot section, that busy, this is a wonderful thing that we have available here. Thank you.
And I think for good and welfare, I almost forgot, and I think I'll let Greta talk a little bit about, what we were recently talking about, how in the community, we have a local artist with Willetts Rocks, that has just really been making a difference in our community. She's spent her own time, her own money, uh, and she's done, how many rocks now, 200?
Over 245, I think, at this point.
Something like that, painted rocks, and has been giving them out to businesses and nonprofits.
And even the city, the city got a rock?
Yeah, the city got a rock, yeah.
If anybody's been under a rock, and they don't know about Lori Berghardt, she's been a nominal champion for our entire community, and has highlighted businesses that many of us didn't even know existed in our town, so she really is a true hometown hero.
Visit the chamber's office, and you'll find a holding area of all the businesses. She's cycling through the community, she's, there's businesses, they haven't even been aware of it, and they have the, you know, she dropped one for the chamber to distribute. There's a nice little collection there, and you can see the artwork and the different styles, very interesting.
Well, expect that Greta and I would like to do something special next month in honor of her. What's her pleasure?
She's a teacher, and she's retired, and she's out there in the community still being-
Yes, and she's deeply appreciated, and she should know it.
I just, I remembered, uh, when you think about artists, we also have, um, music and singers, and I wanted to just, and again, announce that the first Wednesday of each month, and the third Wednesday of each month, at 5:00, there's, um, community singing in it. There's no, you know, no, um, expertise required, and no commitment required, you can just show up and sing, and it's usually stuff that, uh, that you either know, or you get, you learn it in a matter of minutes, and the, the one on the first Wednesday is at 5:00 at the Methodist Church, and the one on the third Wednesday is, uh, we meet at City Park across the street here, uh, at 5:00, and then we go out and sing someplace public.
I saw that in the paper.
And it's, uh, it's just a lot of fun. If you like to sing, you don't have to be good at singing, you just have to like singing.
And with that, we're gonna sing our way into closed session. We're, we're not-
Yes, I do. I wanted to remind the community that, um, we are still taking packets for candidates that want to file to be a council member. Um, the deadline to return your packet is August 9th, um, unless, of course, we have an incumbent seat that did not file, then it's extended until, um, October 15th. No.
August 15th.
August 14th. Thank you, that's a small rate.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna go to closed session, um, we have two items, I believe, before us, and will we port out into open session, should there be any action taken? All right, we're back in open session, it is 10:43, and we have nothing to report.